Mayor Hodges, the public is in.
Thank you, City Manager Seisland, and thank you to all who have joined us this evening. I call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Present.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Present.
Lewitt?
Here.
Gallagher?
Here.
McMillan?
Present.
Raylan?
Present.
And Veener?
Present.
With that, we have a quorum and a warm welcome to our new colleague, Mr. Marty McMillan. Glad to have you tonight. You have a lot to bring to the table. We will now move to the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please join me in saying it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, approval of the consent agenda, which includes approval of the November 8th meeting minutes as well as the finance report. Is there a motion?
I motion.
My second.
Motion by Member Caulfield, seconded by Gallagher. Clerk, could you, any discussion, I should say.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Lewitt?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Raylan?
Yes.
And Veener?
Yes.
With that, the motion carries to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Mr. Seisland, as you know, I encourage some folks who are very busy this time of year to share how we can support our local businesses during this holiday season at the public comment tonight. The first was to be Mr. Joe Habeka of Building Cleaners and head of the Gross Point Park Business Association, but he was unable to attend. I'm going to surmise that's because he's laundering Santa's suit. In addition to those who want to wear their holiday finery to Christmas, Hanukkah, and Kwanzaa celebrations, he did want me to report, however, that a social media campaign is being contemplated and Shaw's Books has reopened after a long flood-related hiatus. So it's important to support him and others. The second who was to appear tonight and is under the weather was Jenny "You Betcher" Santa Wants You to Shop Local of the Gross Point Chamber, and her message, too, was to shop local, which brings me to our last esteemed member of our business community, Ian McCandy Kane of the Eastside Community Network and Mac Avenue Business Association, to share a bit about what is happening along Mac Avenue and nearby. Mr. McCain, I'll assume the North Pole is your second address, so please state your name and place of residence before commenting. And Mr. Seisland, I would assume Mr. McCain, and if we could turn his camera on, is the phone number with the hand raised?
I do see Mr. McCain with his camera on. Ian, if you just wanted yourself, and please go ahead.
Awesome. Mayor Hodges, city council members, thank you so much for having me this evening. Happy holidays to all of you. First off, while I did not done my Santa Claus or elf costume, I did at least meet Mayor Hodges halfway and was able to put on a holiday sweater. So I don't know if you can see it at all, but I got it a couple of years ago. It's also a good reminder to make sure that we're utilizing our US Postal Service this holiday season to send out all the great gifts you're going to buy from our local businesses to your loved ones and other parts of the state, country, and world. So there are two things in particular. One, that is a tool that you can utilize to learn about and patronize our local businesses this holiday season. And the other piece is something that I want you to take advantage of when you're driving down Mac between Connor and Ross. So the first thing, we launched on Small Business Saturday this year, is our Mac Avenue Virtual Mall. So I'll drop the, or do I have an ability to share that? No. Well, I'll just tell you what the web address is. It's just www.macavmall.com. And there's over 90 of the 180 or so businesses on Mac between Connor and Ross that we support, very specifically designed to target places to dine, drink, and shop on the corridor this holiday season. So hopefully, you've already been patronizing those businesses, but if you haven't, definitely go and check them out. There's a lot of great gift opportunities and also places to eat and enjoy beverage with your family, friends, and loved ones. The other thing I'd like to mention is a grant that we were fortunate to receive from the DGC and Invest Detroit that has allowed us to give many grants to 10 businesses on the corridor to decorate during the holiday season. I can tell you right now, between Marlboro and Phillip in Detroit, they've already started doing some decorating, so definitely check out that particular stretch. But there are other businesses that have received grants and that are decorating as well. So thank you so much, Mayor Hodges and council, for the invitation and for having me this evening. If you all have any questions, I'll share my contact information. But yeah, other than that, thank you so much and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. I thought for a minute I was going to have to go to Ace and buy coal for your stocking, so I'm glad you wore that sweater after all. And thank you to the community for indulging this moment. The purpose of it was to show a strong support for our business community. So know we are partners and your success, Mr. McCain. And also, please feel free to use this opportunity going forward in public comment. I hope everyone in the community will to share, to share good news and to share opportunities to work together. So thank you again and happy holidays. And with that, Mr. Seisland, I turn it over to you to continue the rest of public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges. So I do have one written public comment that I'm going to make mention tonight. This comment comes from Ann Kraft of Gross Point Park. During the course of the campaign, there was a discussion and concern shared by some about the fact that candidate Hodges works for a member of the Cotton Family for her day job. I want to applaud her for showing restraint and independence by waiting until her second full month as mayor before appointing a Cotton Family Business Partner/Employee to a city board. Kudos, Madam Mayor, hashtag sarcasm. Mayor Hodges, those are my written public comments, and I do see one hand raised here, so give me one second to share my screen. Phone number ending in 2904579. If you could please unmute yourself, please state your name and city of residence, and please go ahead.
Hi, my name is David Lewitt. I'm in the 1200 block of Berkshire. I'd like to thank Councilmember Lewitt for serving admirably for the last two years. As a taxpayer here in the city, I'm pleased to have a member of council who is willing to ask questions and expose questionable activities of government officials. I think she's going to be missed, and I want to congratulate her on a successful term. It's unfortunate that she can't finish out that term. Congratulations, Councilmember Lewitt.
Thank you. Mayor Hodges, I have no further public comment.
Thank you, City Manager. That takes us on to manager's report as well as the public safety report, so feel free to keep the mic.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Hodges. So a couple activities to update the public administration on tonight and council. The Public Works Building at Mac at Wayburn is on schedule of construction. Concrete footings for the building were poured last week, and we're looking at a June 2022 completion. DPW Building Department are coordinating with contractors and architects for checking on project. This Thursday, we're going to have a Planning Commission meeting regarding the potential Wayburn condo development that'll be at 7 o'clock. Patrick Droes is going to discuss later in the meeting about the CCTV sewer cleaning and progress report from OHM Advisors. FEMA funding, Gross Point Park submitted to FEMA approximately $900,000 for public assistance. Due to cleanup costs and public safety damage during the storm events, Governor Whitmer had appealed the FEMA denial. The appeal files the completion of joint preliminary damage assessments with federal local officials to validate the extent of damage in Ionia, Washtenaw, Wayne Counties. The appeal was successful, and Gross Point Park will be working with FEMA to submit for reimbursement to supplement that response and recovery costs. And we're looking that if we're successful, we will receive potentially up to 75% of those costs reimbursed. So Jane and I and others are working on that right now in an extensive program with FEMA, and so this will be, we're looking at, there's about 60-day period and others, so we're probably looking at maybe an answer within the next two to three months on that process. I'm not going to steal her thunder. Councilmember Gallagher has some discussion regarding Trombley. This week, last week, I met with Eagle and asked Councilmember Veener to be in attendance with me. The city met with Eagle to update our progress for drying out our sanitary system, including but not limited to downspout disconnections, CCTV and sewer cleaning, grant submission, separation of alleys, sewer modeling, flow meter installation, and meeting with multiple entities to identify sewers and areas to review. And I know Councilmember Veener and his discussion will be updating further. The Great Lakes Water Authority Eastside meetings, Gross Point Park continues to meet with GLWA, including the Gross Points, Harper Woods, Wayne County, City of Detroit, South McComb Sanitary District, to discuss plans, communities are reviewing of their sanitary systems, sharing data, working to collaborate on projects. Operator of these communities did meet with GLWA to discuss communication ideas that will assist communities in the likelihood of the extreme rain events. The master plan, currently seen the master plan is a public comment period, which has been sent to various organizations and communities. The Planning Commission will review those comments for potential implementation to the master plan, as well as there's a survey that is currently available for the public on the GPP master plan website. Winter Social took place on November 27th with the Holiday Market, Drinks Tent, Band Stage, Outdoor TV for Michigan and Michigan State College Football Games and Food Trucks. This is a non-city-led event that has taken place the last several years, and I'd like to thank the event organizer, Grand Circus Media, and the generous support of Paul and Carol Scott, Cotton Family, Richard and Jane Manugian, and the Gross Point Housing Foundation. And Letters to Santa, I have some exciting news for families with children. Gross Point Park City Hall has a Letters to Santa mailbox that's located as you walk right into City Hall at the link. The deadline for that submission of these letters is December 20th. This will allow Santa enough time to write back before he goes on his long travel around the world. To ensure he could write back, please provide your name and address, and hopefully we'll have Santa reply as best as possible. Drinking Water Revolving Fund, having preliminary discussions with Eagle for potential fiscal year 2023 loans of the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, the city previously submitted for the fiscal year 2022 but fell out of the funding range. And then later, Chief Gerald will provide more context in his report, but I do have a discussion regarding no parking. And the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, Gross Point Park will partake in a meeting of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. This program involves Southeast Michigan Shoreline Mayors to participate in new projects supported by the Herb Family Foundation. They'll advance the development of projects to strengthen coastal resilience, restore habitat, and modernize water infrastructure shoreline areas. The goal is to address coastal resilience needs and take advantage of upcoming funding opportunities to advance the implementation of high priority shoreline projects. And the city will review for potential funding opportunities and possible next steps. Other two updates to provide, I'm looking at within the several weeks here, setting up some interviews for a Tifa DDA director to assist me in that capacity, as well as the Assistant City Manager job posting was posted on the city website. So certainly, that will be helpful for myself and the administration team and city council as we welcome these new individuals into the city. And so with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments that the council may have.
Any questions for City Manager Seisland? Mr. Relin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering, Nick, when the master plan deadline, the comment, the deadline for comments for the master plan is going to be?
So the minimum dead, for a public comment, the minimum deadline is 63 days. So I believe that date was January 26th. So we're looking at that, you know, depending upon when the next Planning Commission meeting takes place, which we will set those agenda, those meeting dates at the Planning Commission meeting, we're probably looking at sometime in early February, early to mid-February that that time will end.
Okay, so there's still a lot of time for residents. That's great.
There's plenty of time. Yep.
Yeah, that's wonderful. And then my last question is, when was the Assistant City Manager job posted? You mentioned you're, you're going to post it, or it was posted?
It was posted. It's on the city website.
One. And when did you post that?
Today.
Today, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Relin. Other questions for our city manager? Thank you, City Manager. Director Gerald, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council and the public. So as you know, the city and the Department of Public Safety has been trying to work with certain businesses to be responsible partners when it comes to parking. So in our ongoing efforts to alleviate parking congestion, especially in the Churchill Business District, we will be enforcing no parking in city-owned or operated lots from 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM every day, and that'll go into effect as soon as we get the signs made and posted. Violators will be towed at the owner's expense. It's really disappointing that we continue to spend a great deal of time and resources on what would normally be a fairly easy fix, but we will continue to work with the city attorney and the responsible businesses to provide equity for everyone. Secondly, since the school tragedy in Oxford, there's been some questions as to what public safety is doing. So I want to say this right up front. If everyone, if anyone thinks that the police can solve this issue alone, you're really mistaken. This has been and always will be a concerted effort from everybody. As with any incident such as this, we must approach it in a layered, layered approach. So that would consist of education and preparation, intervention, and lastly, response. And I say lastly, because if we're responding, that means we failed in the first two areas, and there's a tragedy going on. Education and preparation consists of the following. Parents, school staff, and other responsible adults engaging our youth frequently on things like the consequences of making threats or bullying others. Active shooter training. Gross Point Park will be conducting active shooter training and drills over the upcoming holiday break. And then in the spring, we will be coordinating an area-wide operation consisting of all the Gross Points, Harper Woods, and the school system on a, on a mass casualty event training. We had a meeting, all the Gross Points and Harper Woods chiefs met with the schools, and Mr. Dean, the superintendent, on December 7th. And we talked about a lot of different things, the potential of a school resource officer program going forward, which would be an officer in each one of the two high schools with a shared cost. I'm not sure what that cost would be. It's my, would be my suggestion that those officers come from the cities that have the high schools, so that would be the farms and the woods. But it would probably be in the area of around $40,000 or less per municipality to have two officers assigned to the schools, which I think is something that we sorely need. I recently learned of an initiative of the US Attorney for the Eastern District of Michigan regarding school safety. And what it is, it's a program that's designed to engage high school students, and it has several different goals. One, to educate students on the difference between free speech and threats, to promote an anti-violence message that advocates student, school, and community safety. It's designed to educate students about the legal, physical, emotional, and societal consequences of violence. It's to provide positive interactions with law enforcement and build police community trust, and finally, to promote a positive environment of reporting threats of violence without reprisal. I talked to Mr. Dean this afternoon, and he has welcomed the district, the representatives from US District Attorney's Office to attend our next meeting for the, with the schools, which will be on December 20th. There will be several members of the FBI Community Outreach Unit that'll be there to present to the schools. We are always looking for ways to work cooperatively with the schools to be more involved with students in the classroom by utilizing our youth, our youth services officers through presentation of formal lessons and presentations, and then a coordinated effort that grows points, Harper Woods, and the school district will be looking into Alice Training, which is a program taught to school staff and students on what to do in the event of a threat in the school. And that is one of the positive things that came out of the Oxford incident is that they had the training, and they believe that it certainly saved lives. So the next step would be intervention. Intervention is important in the prevention of school violence and consists of the following. Number one, if you see something, say something. I really want everybody to understand that no matter how trivial you think something is, please call us, bring it to our attention so we can look into it. It is not a bother to us. You're not wasting our time, and I would rather get involved at the beginning and hopefully prevent something. Next, talk to your kids about what's going on in their lives. Things like school, their interests, what are their challenges, and what are their fears? Be more involved in their lives than the video games that they're playing. If you own a gun, be responsible, lock it in a safe, or use a gunlock. You can't have an active shooter without a gun. We have gunlocks here at the Public Safety Building that are free to anybody who wants one. Just come into the police lobby and ask the on-duty dispatcher for your free gunlock. And finally, responding to an incident. It's my sincere hope that education and/or intervention will occur so that there is no need to respond. However, I do want you to know that your public safety agencies will respond quickly and aggressively to neutralize any threat to our children. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Director Gerald, for your leadership. The tragedy in Oxford is something we all feel deeply and extend our condolences to that community. One way to heal from it is to learn from it and to present, prevent a future occurrence. So thank you for that. Councilmember Lewitt?
Thank you, Director Gerald. I appreciate that summary. I appreciate you being proactive. I'm glad to hear they're going to be doing the Alice Training. One thing I wanted to clarify was about the gunlocks. I'm really excited that our Public Safety Department is handing those out. I think that's a, that safe storage is a huge step toward making everyone safer. And there was a resident of the farms who asked today, as a matter of fact, wanted me to clarify whether they could come over here and get a gunlock, or if they're only for residents of the park.
I'll give them to anybody who, anybody who wants to secure a gun, I'll give them a gunlock. I don't care where they're from. They can come up from Toledo. I don't care.
All right. Thank you so much. I think that's a very important step, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, we actually have quite a few on hand, but when we went down to get them out of our armory, we found that a fairly large portion of them were impacted by our storm event over the summer. So there were damages, they were rusted, and we had to throw them out. But we do, we do have quite a few that are in good shape that we're going to be handing out that weren't affected by the storm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewitt. Other questions from my colleagues? All right, moving forward. Thank you so much, Director Gerald. That takes us to committee and commission reports. Formal appointments to city council committees will be considered at such time. We have a full bench of city council members, which obviously will be soon. We will then have a more complete understanding of skill sets and permanent assignments can be made at that time. But we certainly didn't want to lose momentum because we have many challenges that we're facing that are significant. So I've made some interim appointments to ensure that we have forward movement and solid and constant movement, actually. And those appointments are as follows. Mr. Relin will be serving as our beautification reporter this evening, as well as on communications. Public services and infrastructure will come from Councilmember Veener. Trombley School will come from Councilmember Gallagher. We will also have a brief report on the Marina and other underfunded liabilities by Council, or excuse me, Mayor Protem Caulfield. The Tifa and DDA will be reported on by Mr. Seisland, and then I will have a report on the Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP meeting that occurred. Each of my colleagues has been asked to act in an impactful, focused, and accountable way with substantive reporting that demonstrates alignment with the administration and forward movement on these key issues. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Relin to update us on beautification and communications.
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. So we had two meetings. We had a meeting at the end of November and a meeting in the beginning of December. We had our elections. Kim Clexton is going to remain our chairperson. She's been doing a wonderful job, as well as Lisa Kyle is our vice chair, who's continuing on that role. Shelley Hansen's going to be our secretary, and she was doing great at that. So we're not going to have any breakage in there. We had our beautification awards on November 18th, which was a lot of fun, and our own Mayor Hodges was the emcee for the awards. I want to thank Ms. Laura Orme for the awards presentation, as well as Armin, Julian, Shelley, Hansen, and Brad Etheridge for our award ceremony. We had a few of the winners attend as well. We delivered reward or award packages to all the people that had gotten an award with some homemade cookies and other things like that. So it's a great, a great tradition that we continue on even through COVID. We are in the process of our Holiday Decoration Award recognition. The deadline for our submissions is January 1st, and we're looking at beauty as well as lighting and trying to do those with, with the next two weeks. Hopefully, everything will be lit up. And if you drive down our streets, you see a lot of streets are lit up, so it's pretty nice to see that. We had two dozen trees replaced to replenish more than those that were removed this year. If you have a spot in mind to add a tree, please reach out to City Hall or myself. And one really wonderful note to share, our Christmas tree is up and ready at Wimma Point. It was uprooted from 765 Trombley. This tree needed to be moved because of its size and how it was creeping on the house. So Brian Coulter, our wonderful arborist, talked them into waiting 11 months to cut it down. This means that for the last 28 years in a row, we've had a donated tree to our park for our, for our Christmas tree. The Tree Trimming Company, I'm sorry, the Tree Company Save a Tree is going to be decorating that for free as well. So just good things coming from beautification. Next year, some of the plans we're looking at have a potentially an alley award, beautification award as well. And that's all I have for beautification.
Thank you, Councilmember Relin. Feel free to continue on communications.
Yeah, communications is real quick. Nick and myself are looking into different devices, which we call all-in-one. It has a camera, a microphone, and it also has a speaker. So we can connect it to it to anywhere. That'll be able to stream our, stream our meetings as well as record them. And we're also looking into a survey or some, still taking requests on how to improve our website. If you have any suggestions, please email the city manager or myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veener, would you like to give a public services report, please?
Very much. So obviously, this being an interim appointment, we have not yet had an official meeting for public services. That said, right now, the top priority is acclimating both the council and the DPW with one another, figuring out our facilities. And the fact is, we need to start building, team building and work on teamwork to move ahead. First and foremost, obviously, there's been introductions of personnel. I've been trying to get to know everybody I can at DPW, both on the phone and in face-to-face meetings. Mike Kraus facilitated a tour of the pumping stations. Councilmember Caulfield was able to join me with that. We toured the facility at Patterson Park, as well as the pumping station at Jefferson, reviewed the wet wells, the pumps, sanitary pumping, as well as the decommissioned pumping that we've got in Jefferson. Right now, it's basically setting an outlook for our long-term goals. The primary focus, obviously, is the sewers, which breaks down into sanitary capacity and stormwater capacity, first and foremost, which I will be talking a little bit about the EERV. The fact of the matter is, right now, the sanitary system does not have, there's no control within Gross Point Park if there is an issue down the way. So what we're looking at is putting an emergency valve in. Obviously, the idea would be that we will never have to turn this thing on, but in catastrophe, we will have an option. In conjunction with that, we're also trying to reduce the inputs of water. We want to make sure we minimize the unintentional inflow of water into our sanitary system. So we're already in the midst of working on that, whether it be downspouts, separations, et cetera, as well as stormwater capacity. Obviously, based off the storms we've had this year, we need to see, figure out ways that we can increase our discharge capacity, so we need to scale it up. So right now, what I'm trying to do is identify the weak points and the bottlenecks in the system, because obviously, a system is only going to be as effective as choke points. Right now, I want to see what kind of immediate things we can impact to bolster the support of the system, but we also need to look at long-term capital projects. So again, OHM is involved in that as well, and we're kind of planning that out. To go in conjunction with that, one of the big conversations I've been having with my staff is regarding preventative maintenance, just trying to figure out in our long-term PM planning. Also, a couple of that had budget reviews with the city to figure out then where our asset, pardon me, where our resources being allocated, what's the long-term planning? There's obviously, needs to be a system that is, we are anticipating issues as opposed to reacting to problems. So again, there's a number of different things that we can do on that front. For example, we've been discussing putting VFDs in with the stormwater pumping, improving our switching, also providing inclement weather protections for the existing systems. Kind of my goal here is, our team is actually very informed. They know their system. So it's trying to figure out kind of a breakdown of what are the wants for the system, what are the needs for the system, and figuring out, you know, what we have within our budget to work on that. And then again, figure out longer-term, larger capital improvements we can do with that. Obviously, the city is already working on an in-depth capital improvement plan that should be forthcoming in the upcoming months that was discussed in the previous public service meeting, so that is already underway. Nick spoke about Eagle and the EERV. Obviously, I'm somewhat limited in what I can talk about with that, but we have been having ongoing talks with Eagle, that is the State of Michigan Environmental Organization. Right now, unfortunately, you know, the typical response of regulators is, you know, their incentive is typically to, you know, slow things down, but obviously, we need to get something moving as quickly as possible because we need to be proactive. On the bright side, our team has been very good about this. We've been extremely proactive, responsive to all of their requests, and we are meeting all the accommodations that they've asked us to meet. So again, we're trying to make sure there are no roadblocks within the system, and all of these things are improving the systems that we already have. So again, I think this is a pretty productive meeting, and again, we're going to keep pressing that as much as possible. On a sidebar, we obviously had some major storms this week. Um, on a sidebar, uh, we obviously had some major storms this weekend. Uh, some trees came down. DPW was uh really good about jumping on top of that. A few residents uh had mentioned puddles in their basement. So again, I discussed with DPW to see if there were, you know, any, any issues within the system. It appears that their system was working well. Again, city protocol, if there is an issue with uh water backing up, and they will check the, you know, the manholes uh upstream and downstream. But again, just as the city needs to do engage in preventative maintenance, it's important for our residents to engage in preventative maintenance with their own systems because again, you know, I I had some puddles in my basement too. There are leaks. So, you know, you have to be on top of your home and and your sewers. But again, the city will do the best they can to again, be responsive to any concerns. And again, please voice any concerns to DPW if uh you're aware of any backups. Um, other than that, uh, you know, we're talking a lot about water. That is the primary focus right now, but it's not the only focus. We will be um, you know, dealing with roads with alleyways as well. In fact, on that note, as uh city manager Sizlin has mentioned, Tiff has already begun a program for alley maintenance and cleanup. Uh, there's a program to um work on unused dilapidated garages to support parking pads, which hopefully will alleviate some of the concerns and. It's long with beautification. And then uh, obviously, one of the big focuses right now is figuring out where we can get resources to support the work that we're doing. So we are aggressively pursuing whatever federal grant money we can. Obviously, with the, you know, latest stimulus, uh infrastructure stimulus bill, we're going to stay on top of that. And then obviously, as Nick mentioned, the drinking water revolving fund. So whenever there is support or resources, we're going to do our best to uh make sure that we can get a portion of that as well. That is all I've got for you at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Veener. Love the substance. Uh, Council uh member Gallagher.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Hu- Hodges. Um, on Monday, November twenty-second at eight thirty AM, Mayor Hodges, City Manager Nick Sizlin, and I met with Gross Point Public School System Superintendent John Dean. Uh, and Board of Ed President Joseph Heard. Uh, at that meeting, Gross Point Park requested a pause on the vote for resolution, close Trombley uh early childhood care in order to consider alternative solutions for Trombley. Uh, the request in that meeting was denied. However, uh, City Manager Sizlin and I spoke at the Board of Ed meeting that evening. And special thanks should be given to President Joseph Heard and board members Lisa Pappas, David Brumbaugh, and Ahmed Esmail, who voted yes. To adding language to the resolution that allows for the collaboration, I'm sorry, for the consideration of the Trombley building and the three to five-year plan. Uh, the resolution language uh change is a small step in protecting a valuable asset that has served our city for almost one hundred years. As such, other possibility, us, other possible uses for Trombley, such as adult education, continuing education, the community center, co-ops, um or art studio, among others. Can now be considered to help support ECC while retaining Trombley as a continued community cornerstone. To that end, I have been meeting with community members and stakeholders to ascertain workable solutions for the building and for ECC in the near term. Uh, it is my hope to have a workable solution and presentation to offer the school district within sixteen to ninety days.
Thank you, Councilmember Gallagher. And to my colleagues, I'm happy to entertain questions. I just do want to keep the meeting moving forward and um would urge you to only ask questions that are directly related and not a more appropriate for discussion with at a committee level. So with that, Councilmember Fluid, please um share your, share your thoughts.
Thanks. Um, I had a a question for Councilmember uh Veener about uh lead line replacement. Because um when we first started addressing lead line replacement, which was at the June twenty twenty um Public Works Committee meeting. It was my understanding then that we actually had to start replacing lead lines this year. And I know we are still working on getting funding for that, but where are we in terms of actually starting on that project? And was I incorrect in understanding that it had to be started in twenty twenty-one?
So there is some Latin, I believe, city manager can speak to that as well, but there's some latitude in it. Um, it's five percent a year, but the city is already putting together a plan and the financing of that is also going to be a big portion of it. I think city manager Sizlin wants to speak to that.
Yeah. So as well as part of the requirement, if there, if the DPW identifies, uh, you know, through some work that if there is a lead service line, we do have to replace that. And we have actually replaced several over the last year or so as well. We're looking at, we do have um about half still of that American Rescue Plan funding. That we're looking at using a sizable chunk, and that can be a discussion further at public service meeting that maybe we use some of that for lead service line. As well as our intent with the Drinking Water Revolving Fund program, that if we were awarded this program, we were looking at, I think, approximately um taking care of close to sixty percent of our lead service lines within uh four or five years. And so this is something still that I'm aggressively pursuing. And then thankfully too, um, everybody, if if you haven't seen, the federal government has approved another infrastructure bill that looks like it's more focused towards lead service lines. And so as soon as those um, you know, come about, we're certainly going to aggressively apply for and something I'll work with DPW and Patrick Drows and um, yeah, members of the Public Service Committee.
But separate, separate from the funding issue, are we going to have that five percent replaced that we were required to have by the state?
So as of right now, um, this, we're looking at probably about two hundred thousand, I mean, sorry, two hundred that you would have to do every year. And so if I did the quick math right now, you're looking at, I'm just pulling up on my computer and and just so everybody. Thank you. And yeah, so we're looking at probably with the inflation costs right now, we're looking at close to a million dollars uh that would have to be allocated towards those lead service lines. Uh, this is something that the state certainly wants to see that communities are are doing. However, it is an unfunded mandate. That is certainly uh troublesome for communities to be able to fund those, but that's why we're looking at other funding avenues. In the meantime, we are doing what we can of replacing those lines and something that I want to work with city council with the rest of this American Rescue Plan funding that we can look to take an aggressive approach.
Okay, thanks.
On that note, I would ask our city attorney, um, what sort of obligation we have, not necessarily to answer that question now, but in terms of compliance, um, I think it's important for us to. Uh, ensure that we are complying and doing it in a responsible way so as not to expose the city in any way.
And we'll, we'll continue to take a look at that. I've been working with Nick.
Thank you, City Attorney. Uh, Councilman uh Veener, I see your hand up.
Quick one. So uh, in communications, you mentioned the camera uh asked last uh meeting about hopefully advancing to in-person meetings. So uh. January, I mean, is it looking, uh, looking good?
Oh, sorry, Vicas.
No, please, please. I was going to pass it to you anyway.
Oh, okay. So as of right now, the Wayne County guidelines still allow for the in-person, I mean, sorry, uh Zoom meetings this month. We have not gotten any further guidance. Uh, obviously, this meeting was still, we were looking at doing it uh via Zoom just due to the COVID numbers that were rising at the time. And still working with Councilmember Rayland regarding the all-in-one capacity that we could do so. So uh, yes, I I am targeting that hopefully in January, unless there's other circumstances that, you know, change. But I don't see that coming at this time as, you know, most are going back to in-person. And we are, we are the last gross point right now that is still doing uh Zoom meetings. So yes, I would presume we're looking close at January.
Yeah. And just to add to that, this all-in-one device is pretty, pretty small and pretty mobile, so we should be able to to implement it pretty quickly. So, thanks.
Mayor Protem Caulfield, could you please proceed with your report?
For sure. I'll be brief. Uh, as far as the uh Marina is concerned, I've been reviewing the engineering report that we received a few months ago from Nick. Uh, this time, it's really just setting up some meetings, future meetings with Nick, the administration, uh electrical engineers and people at the city hall to really work as a team to really understand what we have in front of us. Uh, so that's on that report. I'm also going to be in uh engaging with the uh, excuse me, Marina Subcommittee. Uh, getting that back on track and trying to get more, to get more plans, plans of action moving forward. But it is going to be a team effort with the uh people at City Hall as well as administration. Uh, along with the underlying uh underfunded liabilities, again, you know, it's really going to be setting up meetings. We haven't really had any. It's more of introductions right now. Uh, getting with Jane as far as the budget and understanding that as we come into budget terms and items, it's going to be identifying those and really laying those out and getting the groundwork for that. And that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, City Manager Sizlin, could you please update us on the Tifa and the DDA meetings that have occurred?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Hodges. So first I'll go with the Tax Increment Finance Authority. We met on December seventh. Uh, this, we had an informational meeting and a special meeting. Um, informational meeting is required by state law. You have to have two. And so this is an overview of activities that have happened with the Tax Increment Finance Authority. Uh, there was a review of the MKSK Parking Study, which is part, which is also the company that is conducting the City Master Plan. Uh, the Tifa considered and approved of the demolition of a home eleven sixty-six Maryland. And also there was a vote for a stormwater project at the new Public Works Building. Uh, this is something that not only is benefiting the DPW, but also the residents on the fourteen-hundred block. Of Wayburn in Maryland to separate that alley there uh from the storm and sanitary, which is something that the Tifa approved half of that funding to be done. And then I'll be asking later in this meeting for a city council that considered that as well. And I believe uh it's approximately about seventy-eight thousand dollars. That'd be approved out of the Water and Sewer Fund. Uh, the DDA met the next day on December eighth, and this was also a informational and a special meeting. Um, there was a parking study review also done by MKSK. And a lot of this talked about uh looking at um uh parking capacity, uh public parking spaces. And how we move forward with identifying those wayfinding, electric vehicle charging stations, as well as um, you know, looking at, you know, stormwater measures that we can look at moving forward. Uh, as well, the DDA approved the memorandum of understanding between the DDA and the Urban Renewal Initiative Foundation. As part of this, two hundred thousand is don't being donated by the Urban Renewal, which will help coordinate for a building of a parking lot in front of the uh si- um City Hall. The uh library and the municipal campus there. And this is something that I'll be working further with the DDA in that development and uh seeing if there's uh potential opportunities with the space moving forward. That not only is this a parking lot, but this could also be a community event space moving forward. And so I look forward to that challenge as well as the DDA members. And with that said, that is my report.
Thank you, City Manager. Great progress. Uh, the final report for this evening will come from myself. The Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP meeting uh that occurred on November seventeenth. It was the twelfth Annual Government Leaders Forum. Uh, present to address the body was the Honorable Judge Milton Mack, who is the Michigan State Court Administrator, as well as Andrea Smith. Who's a clinical practice um improvement specialist with Detroit Wayne um Integrated Health Network, uh who presented on crisis intervention and jail diversion in Wayne County. I'm pleased to report that representatives of our law enforcement department have participated in such crisis intervention training, so we are well-prepared. There was a substantive meeting, and I do look forward to being an active participant going forward. Uh, with that, we are ready to move forward in the agenda unless there are other questions. Councilmember Relan.
Thanks. Just uh going back to Nick and the DDA, uh, the meeting, um regarding the parking lot, who owns that land between Jefferson and the library?
Uh, the Downtown Development Authority.
Oh, they own it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and then if that project goes over two hundred thousand dollars, who's going to pay for that?
So as I discussed in the DDA meeting, this is something that, working with our engineers and designing this uh parking lot, we're going to have to look at, you know, um, I believe that two hundred thousand is going to be a sizable chunk. That's certainly going to help. But we also have uh two, potentially three fiscal years that the Downtown Development Authority could look uh to allocate some of their budget towards this project. And so I believe with that help, that'll certainly be um helpful towards that, as well as some donor funding uh potentially for there.
Okay. And then just one real question of process. Um, we don't have a design. We don't have a design for this parking lot yet. Why were they voting on approving, paying for it before we have a design and an actual quote? It seems a little rushed.
So this is something that we have had discussions for probably, um, I'm going to say, I don't want to say a year, but maybe three quarters of the year. Where we had been working back and forth as the DDA and the Urban Renewal Initiative regarding an MOU for certain initiatives uh with the uh Future SCOP Center. That's probably looking to be started in the summer of next year. And so going back and forth and debating, you know, on on what would be the DDA would be doing or what the SCOP Center would be doing. We worked together to come to a reasonable solution in something through the uh parking study that we did. I also asked the SCOP Center as well, because it was brought up in conversations from the public. That they are going to be taking a a sizable amount of parking spaces. And something that was concerning was the residential spaces on Maryland and Hampton and others that. You know, we certainly don't want to see, you know, residents, you know, having their parking spots taken by patrons of the SCOP Center. I did work with the SCOP Center and and requesting that they do consider uh, this is, it's an urgent matter of myself, the DDA, and the city and several council members discussed as well. And uh, I was thankful that they uh heeded my request. And so looking at this um uh parking study, it was identified that in order to help at a peak capacity event of the SCOP Center. By building this parking lot over in this area, this would relieve that congestion from those residents, as well as for City Hall, Library, Court, and others. And so that's kind of how we got to there.
Okay, I know we talked, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yeah, because I know we talked about this in May of twenty twenty when it was trying to get, it was trying to, it was in the budget that council was supposed to approve. And we brought it up and they had mentioned it was forty thousand dollars to pay for that parking lot. Um, so I'm just wondering how it switched from possibly coming out of our budget to now going to DDA's budget. It it's, yeah, I mean, you know how I feel about it. I I like the green space there. I don't want to lose any more green space that we have. We have enough parking lots, I think. And I think that's that parking should be the main priority of the facility that's going to use it, which is the SCAP Center. So for them to take away such a big green space, I'm kind of disappointed that it didn't come to council to approve this first.
And and just a a couple of things. Uh, the DDA, you know, it wasn't their budget, not the city council's budget. It was something at, I know the direction of yourself and other council members, you did vote, um, you know, back then. To uh consider removing that from their DDA budget, which is something uh city council can do. And working with the uh, the city attorney or DDA attorney Howlett, uh, this is something that is a DDA initiative since it's their property. And so this is something that through his legal work, he looked at, this is something just between the DDA and the Urban Rural Initiative Foundation. Um, city attorney Howlett, I don't know if you have any further comment regarding that process or if I touched on it?
I I I would reiterate that. The DDA, we've talked about before, is a separate entity. It is their property. Um, that's their deal to make. That's their decision to make. Is a board, and that's the decision they made. Um, budgetary considerations going forward. If there are specific items in that DDA budget, uh that does get approved by council. So future budgets that included that parking lot would come to council. And again, if if you look at the MOU, the construction of the parking lot is tied to the two hundred thousand dollar donation. Um, to the Downtown Development Authority. So it it's not like the DDA has a written in blood commitment to do the parking lot. It's just if they do and produce or provide that parking lot, they get a two hundred thousand dollar uh donation towards that effort. So in terms of coming to council, the council would see it in if it's in the DDA budget in the future, because the council does approve that.
And as part of that, the SCOP Center has to be built.
Okay. Oh, so the parking lot won't be until then. So that two hundred thousand dollars will be in this twenty twenty-two budget fund, most likely.
More than likely, you'll see some allocation by the DDA, and this is something that we as a DDA will review.
Okay. And just to clarify, DDA means Gross Point Park. So DDA owns, it means Gross Point Park owns it, right? That's our residents that own that land.
Right.
So I'm not sure what you mean. The DD, the down, it's owned by the Downtown Development Authority.
Then the downtown, oh, sorry, Jake.
What? Okay. I think it's probably time to move to the next question, Councilmember.
No, I'm, I'm still, I'm still concerned about this. Um, so.
I understand that, Councilmember Relan. I think we've exhausted most of the key points. I think the discussion could continue with the DDA. Is that an advisable recommendation, City Manager Sizlin or Howlett?
That's fine. I'm fine with that.
I just want to keep the movie, meeting going, Councilmember Relan. I think we've got the issues on the table.
This is the last piece of green space we have in our county committee and last city council voted against making that a parking lot. And this year, all of a sudden, it's become a parking lot. So a lot of people.
They, they voted against the budget inclusion. This city council cannot vote on what to do with property it does not own, and the DDA owns that property.
But the DDA is for the residents. Sorry, keep going, Jake. I apologize.
No, so the it, the residents don't own it either. The DD, the Downtown Development Authority owns it. That's, that's how it works. And so the decision-making process for what to do with that property lies with the Downtown Development Authority and that board. And so residents, those meetings are public, those decisions are public, the MOU is public, the residents certainly have input. But that property and what to do with it is is a decision made by the DDA, not the city council. But as I said, the budget, if there's a budgetary requirement to develop that parking lot, that does come back in front of city council at that time.
Okay.
And Councilmember Relan, I think your point is well taken. Yes, of course, it's taxpayer dollars that are involved. So I I see the point that you're trying to make and and that's, that's valid.
But I'm saying, DDA should be rep, doesn't represent our residents then at all?
Of course, they do. They have a public meeting and made a decision. The DDA.
But you, but you stated Jake, that DDA doesn't report to our residents. When I thought every.
You're putting words in there. That's totally inaccurate. The DDA owns the property and can decide what to do with it. The DDA board is composed of members appointed by the mayor and confirmed by this city council. That, that's how it works. That we don't hold a vote. No, that the DDA is appointed to execute and and.
But they should be representing our residents, is what I'm saying, correct?
I'm sorry?
They should be representing our residents.
They, and I think they do. I think they.
Okay, good, good. That's, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
All right, I'm going to call for a point of order, and we're going to move forward. Thank you, Councilmember Relan. Councilmember Fluid?
Thanks. Um.
Thanks. A couple of things. First of all, I do want to point out that I think it's appropriate for us to ask those questions here, because we're actually not allowed to speak in the DDA or the Tifa meeting. So if we do have questions, this is the only forum where we can really come forward and ask those questions of the people who represent us on the DDA and the Tifa and the city manager. So this does give us the opportunity to get some clarification. And there was one thing on the MOU that I wanted to clarify, which is that initially, in the October 2019 meeting, council had voted to convey land owned by the city, I believe it's four plots, to the URIF for free. And then that was adjusted, and the URIF agreed to pay $410,000 for those plots of land, which was the appraised value according to CBRE at the time. Now, if I'm reading this MOU correctly, they're no longer paying $410,000 for the land. They are instead donating $200,000 for the parking lot. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, and it's, it's a little bit, there's a broader picture to it. There's also, in addition, the city has, or I should say, the DDA does no longer has the obligations for the $75,000 a year. They also don't have to deliver a pad-ready site. The DDA is not responsible for the sidewalks. So it was essentially a trade-off among certain expenses in shedding those expenses. And that was, that was all part of the discussion, correct?
Oh. Thanks, Jake. I see, I see that here, but I wanted to be clear about, we were, we're giving up the $410,000, which was a step forward, I believe, for the taxpayer. I'm very glad that the DDA is no longer committing $75,000 a year and that we don't have to deal with the demo and replacing the sidewalks. Those are all good points. But I wanted, I wanted to be clear about, they are no longer paying for that land, which the city, I believe, paid about 2.1 million for, I believe. So they're no, they're no longer paying for that land, but they are donating $200,000 for the parking lot. And again, because I didn't ask questions during the DDA meeting, I wanted to make sure that I was reading this MOU correctly, and it appears that I am. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Councilmember Fluid. And my intent certainly is not to stifle dialogue. I'm just trying to run an efficient meeting, and I think some, I would encourage my colleagues to try to get some of these questions answered at a staff level before meetings, because there's often answers that resolve the concerns that don't burden our meetings. We can keep them moving forward efficiently. So thank you for that. Are there other questions? Okay, with that, we will move forward to unfinished business. The OHM sewer update, please.
Patrick, if you'd like to take it away. Can I have screen share enabled?
Yeah, give me one second.
Great. Great, thank you. Good evening, council. Tonight, we are going to provide the monthly update as to where the city is at with regards to the work of assessing conditions and plotting a path forward for additional sewer resiliency within the city sewer system. So a number of you may have seen this over the summer, especially some of our newer council members. But generally speaking, we are trying to advance three main goals as part of the sewer evaluation. The first being to really dry out the sewer, and that's really getting sources of wet weather out of the system. Modeling exercise to better understand the system and optimize capacity. And then, of course, creating relief points to provide resiliency in future extreme rain events. And then so just an overview of those tasks that we had suggested back in August. Asset management, targeted inflow removal, optimization in operations, resiliency, and then eventually public engagement. Just as an overview, since that time back in August, the city has been able to advance a number of those tasks, specifically with the award of the sewer closed-circuit television manhole inspection contract back in September. There was work also in September to improve the downspout ordinance updates. Flow metering was part of the modeling exercise, and that work was bid out, and we have an update on that. So really, the remaining work is, is all about modeling and developing solutions for what the future condition looks for. And over the next several months, we will start to see some of that come forth in the form of potential alternatives analysis, and then eventually, community conversation to really hone in what the desired level of service is. So with that in mind, this was the schedule that we had presented. And so now we're kind of sitting here right between fall and winter of 2021. And the number of these tasks are well underway. We talked about the sewer assessment with the closed-circuit television work. Our flow metering is now underway, and that's speeding right into our model development. So the point today is to provide a little more of an update about how that, how those efforts that are underway are going at this point. So we'll start with the sewer condition assessment. And by the way, this is all pulled from the written report, which is found on page eight of the meeting packet, if you're looking for this information as well. At this point in time, the city has now had about 10% of the sewer system inspected. And you'll see on the graphic on the right, that work has really been focused on the south and northeast side to start. We have been progressing generally from west to east, and then from north to south for the areas north of Jefferson, and basically the opposite of that for south of Jefferson, with the point being really to start at the high points and work downstream to the low point in the system, which is Jefferson Avenue. And so whether you see on the bottom here, this is an example of not really typical infrastructure. In, in fairness, in reality, the reports that we've been getting are fairly good. But there are instances in certain areas where we find sewers that are, are, do have some cracking, which really are going to feed into later capital improvement projects that'll be part of future CIPs. On the manhole assessment, this is actually looking at each individual manhole. There's a little more progress on that. We're about 19% of the way through on that. And that, again, has really been focused, again, on that west side of the city, the areas from Windmill Point up to Jefferson. And then on the west side, again, from Wayburn, and this is actually a screenshot from today. So our manhole inspections are now getting past Nottingham and continuing eastward from that. This is an example of a photo showing some inflow and infiltration. We talked about manholes being a potential source where stormwater can get into the system. A key finding so far, really, there's, there's been a, a fair amount of cleaning that's been done, and we're removing sediment on a daily basis, which is going to improve sewer system operations. There's going to be some, as we mentioned, pipe segments that are going to need some repair in the future. So look for that as part of future capital improvements programs. And then within, especially the area up in this area here, a lot of these manholes are located in alleys. Some of those have open covers, which are sources of inflow and infiltration. That is a potential future project to do separation. Manager Sizlin mentioned earlier about the DPW project. That is actually going to start with removing one of those manholes that currently is tied into the sanitary sewer system. So that's part of an improvement that I think will be part of future recommendations. We're also looking at Jefferson Avenue sewers. In future council meetings, there may be an item about ways to gain inspection. What's been found is that there are a very limited number of access points to the large diameter storm trunk sewer. So in the future, we are evaluating options to gain entry to that. In the future meetings, we will likely present those options and potentially suggest using some of the contingency that was set up within the pipetex sewer bid to, to access those large diameter sewers. Quick update on model. We did deploy six meters out in the field. So that is going to be data that is used to calibrate our sewer model to improve accuracy. And then we've also done preliminary modeling at Three Mile such Patterson Park pump station to identify the effectiveness of the stormwater pumping station, if it was to be used as part of the ERV system. Coordination with other agencies. This was mentioned earlier in the meeting, but there's been a number of meetings with GLWA Eastside members, including one today, where we provided an update of the Fox Creek enclosure, which again is a sewer that passes through the community. It doesn't actually drain any portions, but because it does pass through, how that sewer functions is important for the community to know. We also had a meeting with Eagle that was supportive of a manual-operated overflow system, provided that they had in-system instrumentation. And some of the work we talked about earlier about drying out the system was, was maintained as a priority for the community. I mean, the outreach suggestion is to create a advisory council of a number of members throughout the community that kind of represent different geographies, so we can get perspective on some of the, how some of these solutions that we're going to come about during our model exercise, how those are effective or not for various areas of the community. And so having that advisory council as a suggestive way for us to get feedback in an open setting, so we can influence our design options before those are presented to the larger community. Downspout disconnection program, there is going to be a flyer that will be issued in early 2022 that will be used to coordinate inspections of downspouts within the community. DPW staff will visit homes that are interested, and it'll be documented for future tracking purposes. And another idea is a community survey. Again, to capture the geographic distribution, duration, and depth of some of the flooding over the summer, a survey to the community is proposed, both the digital and paper version for those that don't have pure access. And this data will be used again to help calibrate model data. And then in the middle to late spring, a suggestion with these outreach events will be proposed, where we can present preliminary model findings and gather feedback from the community. Again, these will be based on whatever the allowable guidance is for community meetings, whether those are Zoom or in person, we'll obviously assess the condition where we're at with that. So look ahead. Over the next month, we propose, or an update will be that we'll continue our televising and cleaning work in the north-central portion of the city. And there's going to be an actual physical walk of the 78-inch interceptor within Jefferson Avenue. And then, as you mentioned, there's also a downspout disconnection flyer that will be sent out to the community to get those scheduled. So with that, I can turn it back to Manager Sizlin.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. City Manager Sizlin, do you have anything to add?
No. Once again, thank you, Patrick, for all the work. And Patrick's been working hard with DPW and myself to continue this work that we're going to see in the months ahead from these reports from OHM. So thank you, Patrick.
Well, it is certainly a top priority. So thank you for your continuous efforts in that regard. Any questions from my colleagues, from Mr. Drews or Mr. Sizlin? Councilmember Rowland?
Sorry, one quick question, just since it has to do with Pemberton and Lake Point. The televising progress map provided shows all the completed areas, cleaning areas needed, areas that haven't been televised, as well as some in pink that are unable to be televised. I'm wondering what your recommendation is for those that are unable to be televised. I see that as Pemberton and Lake Point.
Correct. So in those areas, what was observed is that the manholes in the rear yard areas were often difficult to locate, which the issue there is that when we, when you do these inspections, the, they're basically motor-driven cameras that sit in the pipe. And those can only go 300, 400 feet until you need another access point. And so some of the work that we're proposing to do is a little more aggressive investigation to try to find those manholes. One of the things that we're really trying to do right now is we're trying to assess as much of the city as fast as we can, but we're making notes about these areas where we got to come back and give it a second look. And that's one of the reasons we have the contingency set up. So, you know, if we get to the end and we do have additional dollars, we can go back in there and try to hit those areas a little harder. It's, it's a matter of records review. Some of it's even the point of going out there with a metal detector to try to find where these manholes are located. Problem is, a lot of times, they're next to fences, so it's very hard to find. So.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an intensive effort. And certainly, if residents have any idea where they're at, maybe they put a flower garden or something over it. We've made a note on the flyers just to try to help out the crews as much as possible if they happen to know where something is.
Awesome. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, the next item on the agenda is council comment.
I have a question. Sorry, Michelle.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gallagher.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges. So just a quick question, actually two maybe. You mentioned the sewer advisory council. Has that, have you identified people for that? Or how are you selecting that council? How does that go about?
So this is something that Patrick Dros and I will be working on further of how many members that'll comprise of and how that process works. What we're looking to do is, you know, for those residents that may have, you know, everything from a background in water sewer infrastructure to just interested parties regarding how to help us out. We just want to get different aspects from the community, you know, what they're looking at with a level of service and/or maybe that what they've seen or experienced in these several storm events. And so this is something that Mr. Dros and I and DPW will be working on, and I'll be, I'll be bringing forth to council for further updates.
Thanks so much, City Manager Sizlin. Other questions? You, you mentioned three buckets in the, in the earlier slides, dry modeling and relief points. Is it too early in the process to identify any relief points at this point? Or have you identified relief points in terms of the system itself?
So certainly, the, the extreme emergency relief valve's been talked about often. And why that is important is just from the the existing sewer infrastructure. The, the closest point with the Jefferson Avenue lower trunk sewer to Lake St. Clair just happens to be at Patterson Park. So geographically, that makes a lot of sense. There may be other areas that we identify as part of the sewer modeling. That's unfortunately something I really couldn't tell you right now, but we're going to be on the lookout for that if there are areas where that makes sense.
Okay, so then that comes back to the upgrades that you're potentially identified that are required at Three Mile. I, I don't, is it also, have the permitting for the ERV and so forth? Have, are you working at the, in tandem with and at the same time for, for that solution? And have those been applied for or submitted yet?
Permits are not in. We did meet with the permit agency last Monday, actually. And what we're, what we're agreeing to do is basically kind of a working group with the actual permit engineer. So they're seeing our information as we prepare it. And it's not a situation where the first time they see it is when a set of construction documents comes in with the, with the permit application. We want Eagle to have the opportunity to provide us feedback if there's things they want to see, even from the standpoint of our metering. If our metering data is not delivering what they deem as acceptable, we want to know that now. And so one of the things we're doing is we have the meters out. We're collecting the data. If the data isn't meeting their goals within our contract, we can get those moved to wherever they feel is necessary. We think where they're at right now is the best deployment. But ultimately, we need the permit from them. So, you know, it would have been preferable, I think, to know that a little sooner. But we have now the, the, you know, the working relationship with the actual permit reviewer to have that, you know, that dialogue now. So.
Good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gallagher. Any other questions? And again, I would urge my team to be sure to get as many questions resolved as possible in advance with staff. And items of note can then be reported out to the public. So thank you. Moving on to new business, item number one, Councilmember Fluid resignation. We have been presented with an intent to resign her position on the Gross Point Park.
We, we missed council comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I mentioned it and then forgot to go back to it. So thank you for that point of order, Councilmember Fluid. Shall I assume you have an item?
I do.
All right, feel free.
I do. First of all, I have a couple of sustainability questions. The first, as I, as I go out the door, there are a couple of things I wanted to follow up on. The first is, we had been on sustainability discussing EV charging stations for quite some time. And we were actually told in summer of 2020, I believe, that the Cotton family was going to be donating a couple of EV charging stations. I had inquired about this a few months back and did not have an answer. So I wanted to see what the status was on that donation.
Uh, yes. So it's something that we have discussed. And so I'm working with the family that, moving forward in several areas, that we can look to add these EV charging stations. It's something that was definitely brought up in this MKSK parking. It's something that was definitely brought up in this MKSK parking study that we really need to advance is you've very well seen that, you know, there's a lot more electric vehicles coming into the area and we need to provide this level of service to our residents. And so this is something that has been in my mind, something we'll work on and I'll be working with the Cotton family for that opportunity. Councilmember Fluid, while I, you know, what I can do certainly is, you know, as, you know, this moves forward, we'll be certain to not only myself and maybe some others, we'll be the first to send you a picture of a couple of those EV charging stations in in the city. I really look forward to having that in here.
I do, too. I think that's a, they're surprisingly inexpensive. And I think that would be something that would kind of keep the department moving forward to add those for people to know that they're available. I definitely think that that would be a benefit. The other sustainability issue that I wanted to raise, which I had emailed about quite some time ago was, so we've established that we have to address flooding from, we have to take a multifaceted approach to the flooding issue. We have also established that Phil Pitters apparently has a contract to do landscape consulting for the city to the tune of over $100,000, but we're not able to identify any services that have actually been provided by Pitters. So my suggestion was that we approach the Pitters Company and ask them to do an analysis of our green spaces in the city and determine where we could add plants that would address runoff, whether those are areas that already have plants, if the plantings need to be changed, if there are areas where we need to add green space. That's a suggestion. Again, as I said, I had made that via email a while back and I wanted to follow up on that as well because I think this is something we've probably already paid for and perhaps we could get some value for our dollar on that contract that would be sustainable and also help with the runoff issue. And then the third thing I wanted to raise, final thing I wanted to raise is that at the November meeting, I had asked about an analysis of city contracts to determine that we didn't have any other contracts that we were unaware of that would make us liable or make taxpayers liable. What we had decided to do was that City Manager and City Attorney would take a look and get a handle on what kind of numbers of contracts and what kind of time commitment we would be talking about there and come back to this issue at the December meeting. It's not on the agenda. So I wanted to follow up on that.
Yes, absolutely. So as part of our work right now and after that council discussion, it was discussed that we would be further looking at these contracts and to make sure there's not any outgoing, you know, liabilities or anything that we need to look at. And so with that said, I've been working with Mr. Hollitt and Clerk Blayhut as we're working with our auditor, Ramey Phillips, right now, who reviews several of these contracts, including purchases by the city for compliance. And so this is definitely a large process. We are not quite at the what I was hoping right now of being able to have a answer for you right now. On the total, this is quite a big undertaking as well as we're doing F-65 reporting, which is state required reporting for roads right now and other auditing that we need to do right now. And so we're still working in this process right now. But I don't know if Clerk Blayhut, do you have any other comments moving forward with our auditor, Ramey?
Right now, he's completing the audit and just working on the F-65 and F-51 reports to get them done before year end.
Thank you. I forgot about Act 51.
And and just to jump in, piggyback on that, Nick and I have met a couple of times and talked about these contracts and putting them into different buckets. You know, one of the challenges is sort of identifying priority targets for contracts that might have that kind of backend liability that you're focused on versus, you know, a process where we're trying to call every contract. And so we're identifying those buckets, trying to separate those and then prioritize those for review. So it hasn't fallen off the radar. It's not on the agenda tonight. We're still working on it. We have met on that and we don't intend to stop doing it. I thought it was a good point when you brought it up and it's something from a legal standpoint, I think, better understanding some of that backend liability is a good idea and a good practice to to push forward.
Okay, as I said, you know, I understand what you're saying, but we did pass a resolution that it would be revisited tonight. So I just wanted to follow up on that and I hope that it doesn't disappear once I'm gone.
Right. And just as clerk, we tabled the resolution itself. As I recall, if I look at the procedure, I don't think the resolution itself passed, but but the point is well taken and it's not going to fall off the table. It's it's on my radar in a priority of mine. Like I said, it, from a legal perspective, it's an excellent idea.
Thanks. I believe the minutes did specify a January report subsequent to that tabling. Councilmember Gallagher?
Thank you, Mayor Hodges. You know, to to support Councilmember Fluid and her request, you know, most of the major contracts that we have are Public Safety Patrol, Command Dispatch, Public Works, DT, Streetlight and Gas Sewers, Legal Services, et cetera. So, you know, maybe we could address, you know, just, you know, maybe one of those. You know, Legals doing a fine job and it seemed to be one of our expenses. I don't know, maybe when is the last time we we put legal out to bid is is should we be soliciting proposals to ensure we're getting competitive pricing? In this instance, maybe looking at one contract to move us forward.
Well, and to clarify, that's not exactly what I was asking about because, and again, this was before your election when we had some closed session meetings. And so we can't really talk about all of that here. There were contracts that were in place that were not approved by council. And so that's what I want to do is ensure that we're not going to be surprised by any more of those contracts that then leave the city liable. So I'm not asking for a review of every single contract that the city has with everyone. I'm asking that, you know, the city go through and make sure we don't have any more of these surprise contracts that are that are going to come back and buy this later.
And I'm confident we're getting that from our staff team as they're reporting. So we will continue to honor that concern, Councilmember Fluid. I think we all want to ensure that we're operating at a best practice and not exposing the city unnecessarily. Are there other questions or comments during as part of council comment? Were you finished, Councilmember Gallagher?
Well, I just wanted to clarify. I thought that the reason we tabled the motion in the last meeting was the fact that we were just trying to define the scope more specifically, which is what we asked City Manager Sizlin and our City Attorney to to review. And so I, and I think that that was the question is to what a large scope is. And what I was trying to do is to just offer something up of one opportunity that we could address in in terms of understanding our contracts and where they sit and whether, you know, we have best practices. I mean, I don't know. I I'm just asking, right? As a new member here, so like, when was the last time we took, we took it out to bids? For example, in on the for our legal services?
I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Caulfield to put this on his list of to-dos as part of the finance question. I think as we move into the next fiscal year and the like, those are things we can evaluate and look at to ensure we're getting the best possible cost efficiencies. So if you could please do that, Mayor Protem Caulfield, and keep track of that for us because certainly we want that type of efficiency in all of our contracts and that will enable us to move forward. Now, does that satisfy your concern, Councilmember Gallagher?
Thank you, Mayor Hodges. It does.
Councilmember Relin?
Thanks, Miss Mayor. Nick, I want to retouch this. We talked about getting a checklist for any house demolition with our ordinances. I wonder if there's any updates on that.
If I recall, Councilmember Rayland, I think this was in regards to how a house demolition process would work. Is that correct?
Yeah, to ensure we're safe and following ordinances.
Yeah. And so this is something that as, you know, the Tifa, you know, with that home moving forward, that this is something that Mr. Brennan and I will be working to make sure that, you know, if there's anything that's required of the Tifa or city or private residents, you know, everything from reporting and or to notification of area residents and working with DPW on making sure, you know, gas and electricity are cut off and water. And so this is something that, you know, Mr. Brennan and I are working on.
Okay, I'm I'm wondering if I can ask council to to approve a moratorium on any house demo until we have this checklist created. Just again, to ensure the safety for the people surrounding the surrounding areas and the workers and to ensure we're complying with our ordinances.
City Attorney Hollitt, is that allowable and advisable?
I mean, I suppose we could make a motion, but I would rather have it on the agenda and something to look at and talk about. I mean, we have an ordinance in a process through the building department for the demolition. I don't know that that we would necessarily need a moratorium. But if that's something the council wants to entertain, that would be up to the council.
Yeah, the last, sorry, sorry. The last time we talked about, we mentioned that there was pieces of ordinances out there. There was no concise ordinance checklist for a house demolition. And I think that'd be really good to have just because of the safety factors that that were involved with the last one.
So in terms of meeting management and best practices, I think it would be advisable to have an opportunity for staff to properly evaluate these items and that it would be best to present them as agenda items. So certainly not an attempt to not address this, but if everybody's in agreement, we can ask that the administration present this for consideration at our February, our January meeting, at least a recommendation on what the most appropriate course of action would be. Is that amenable to you, City Manager Sizlin and you, City Attorney Hollitt?
Amenable to me. I think that's a fine process. And in the checklist, if we want to incorporate that into the ordinance itself, which I think is the goal, we should come through the ordinance committee and then up for a vote where we amend the ordinance.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Relin, for bringing that to the table. Other items for council comment? Okay, thank you. And thank you again to Member Fluid for ensuring we not miss that item. Back to new business and Councilmember Fluid's resignation. As you all, I believe, are aware by this point, there is, she has expressed an intent to resign. The charter does require it be accepted by city council in order to formalize it. So I would ask if there is a motion to accept the resignation of Councilmember Fluid as of today, December 13, 2021. Make a motion.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Gallagher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Caulfield. Any discussion? With that, Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
No, no, I mean, yes, I'm just kidding.
And Viner?
Yes.
Motion carries to accept the resignation and Member Fluid, please forgive us, that sounded so hard and cold. We now can move into the next item where you can more appropriately be feted for your service on council, given the fact that our next item on the agenda is resolutions that honor our outgoing mayor as well as other members of council. So before us this evening, there are multiple resolutions to achieve just that. I'd like to ask that each resolution be introduced as a motion individually. Then, once the motion's been moved and seconded, council members are free to comment if you would like on each of our colleagues. I will ask however that we keep these comments tight. And we will start with Mayor Robert Denner. I will make the motion to introduce the resolution honoring him and that resolution reads as follows. Whereas Robert W. Denner served on the city council from February 2003 to 2017 and served as mayor from 2015 to 2021. Whereas Robert W. Denner has been a resident of Gross Point Park for 39 years with his wife Nancy and raised his two sons, who are now raising their children in Gross Point Park, resulting in the fourth generation of Nancy's family to live in Gross Point Park, who have all attended the Gross Point Public Schools. Whereas Robert W. Denner had a prestigious, successful career as a management and technology consultant with a global firm. Whereas Robert W. Denner served as a trustee of the Gross Point Park Foundation from 1991 through 2020, including serving as president of the foundation from 1991 through 2020, beautifying Gross Point Park with the amenities, including the helm boardwalk, the hut and ice rink, the baseball dugouts, the defer playscape, the Jefferson Avenue streetscape, the Okolski Theater, the Lavens Activity Center, the splash pad, the Lindell Lodge, the Zero Depth Pool, the Poving Chipping Green, the Patterson Park Gate, the Denner Fireplace, the Heenan Sculpture, the Churchill lighting, the Carol C. Scott Theater, the Tompkins Center upgrades, the Sales of Two Cities Sculpture, the Tompkins Center Atrium and Atrium Gas Grill and the pickleball courts. Whereas Robert W. Denner served as a member of the Personnel Committee, the Ordnance Review Committee, the Public Services Committee, the Planning Commission, the Downtown Development Authority and the Real Estate Committee. Whereas Robert W. Denner worked with the administration to successfully navigate the revenue challenges of the 2008 recession while protection of real estate values and quality of life, especially in the Tifa District. Whereas Robert W. Denner gained the trust of the voters for important city investments through the Public Safety Millage and the Road Millages, which enabled the acquisition of a new fire engine and Gross Point Park providing the nicest roads in our area. Whereas Robert W. Denner made key appointments to boards and commissions to successfully transition them to represent a cross section of the city's generations, profession and diverse residents. Whereas Robert W. Denner supported the revitalization of Churchill as well as improvements in the Charlevoix and Mack Business Districts, including establishing the Churchill and Charlevoix Social Districts and improving the Mack Streetscape. Whereas Robert W. Denner was instrumental in assembling the land needed for redevelopment at Mack and Wayburn for what is becoming the new Public Works Garage and also the land needed for redevelopment at Jefferson and Wayburn for what will become the Paul A. and Carol C. Scott Center for the Performing Arts and the Richard and Jane Minugian Art Gallery. Whereas Robert W. Denner achieved the overall result of a vibrant and successful community with outstanding amenities and quality of life, which has achieved outside recognition for Gross Point Park and many rankings as one of the very best places to live in Wayne County and the state and in the country. Now, therefore be it resolved that Robert W. Denner be recognized by Mayor Hodges and members of council for his outstanding service for the city of Gross Point Park, for his dedication as a respected council member and mayor for almost 19 years of service to the city of Gross Point Park. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gallagher. Discussion. Councilmember Relin?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to Bob. You and I butted heads. Is he here today?
Yes, I was, yes, I believe so. Thank you, Councilmember Relin. City Manager Sizlin, can we turn Mayor Denner's camera on? And certainly Mayor Denner, at such time, we welcome your comments as well.
You want to have him go first?
Well, I don't know, Mayor Denner. What would you like? We'll give you some decision making authority.
You're meaning, Mayor Hodges.
All right. Well, why don't we fat you and then you'll have the opportunity to hear all that and you can process your comments a bit.
At some point, at some point in all these resolutions, you need a vote of council to adopt them. But I'm not sure if you want to do that before all the comments or during the discussion. So it's.
Well, I was treating them as discussion, but if we want to call the question, although something somebody might say might change our vote perhaps. Be responsible. Go ahead, Councilmember Relin, change our minds.
I want to say thank you to Bob. You're one of the reasons I ran for council as well. You and I butted heads often as we had different goals, but we both wanted what was best and what we thought was best for GPP and its residents. I want to say thank you for your dedication to our town. You worked a long time with council and all you've worked to improve and to add to our amenities in our city. It's it's really quite amazing and something very, something to be very proud of for the rest of your life. I've always stated that resident Denner and resident Relin are friends. So I look forward to having that beer, although non alcoholic for me for the short term as residents together with nothing but friendship to talk about. I wish you good luck and less stress in your future.
Thank you, Councilmember Relin. Other comments? All right. Well, Councilor, or excuse me, Mayor Denner. Certainly you've led for the community at large, but also as a role model for individuals. And the tradition of character and integrity and service and professionalism and exceptionalism that you've built is one we all must aspire to as we move forward as an as a community. And the foundation you've created is one that will pay dividends for generations to come. And for that, you should be very proud. Your calm, thoughtful and strategic approach to leadership always, always had the best interest of the community in mind. And I'm so grateful to have worked with you, a man of certain character. So going forward and as a fellow parrot head, I hope you and your wonderful wife Nancy and two sons and their families enjoy many cheeseburgers in paradise, knowing that you've earned a spot at the highest levels of regard. And I hope you leave knowing how honored and respected you are. So thank you for that service. Other comments?
Well said, Michelle.
Thank you, Councilmember Gallagher. Mayor Denner?
Okay, I get the last word here on mine. I'd love to. Um, I'd love to uh, to, to thank you, Mayor Hodges and council for this resolution. It really does mean a lot to me and my family, uh, to, to have you put that together for us. Um, overall, it's been, been an incredibly rewarding experience to serve my community, and, and I'm really uh, honored that I had the opportunity to do that. And I, I'm really grateful that I had the opportunity to work with a lot of very talented, talented and dedicated um, uh, public servants, both elected and uh, the administration. Uh, that made a lot of what we accomplished and what we did uh, uh, very easy. And uh, I'm particularly proud of the result, and it's, it's, it's was mentioned earlier in the, in the resolution, I think. But uh, the quality of life in Gross Point Park is second to none. For a lot, a lot of very good reasons, uh, we're a very successful community. And uh, I, I couldn't be more proud of uh, Gross Point Park. And I wish Mayor Hodges and the council all the best going forward, and I'm sure our city will be in uh, very good hands. Uh, we have excellent leadership going forward, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Denner. Uh, moving along, um, City Manager Seislin, could you please bring uh, uh, former Mayor Protem James Robson to the floor? And as you're doing that, I will make the motion to honor um, Mr. Robson uh, with the resolution that is uh, to be read at this moment. Um, I will read it now, and that is whereas James E. Robson served on the Gross Point Park City Council from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen uh, ninety-three, and was re-elected in two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one, serving a total of twenty-eight years on council for the city of Gross Point Park. Whereas James E. Robson is being recognized for his leadership, vision, and dedication, and commitment to Gross Point Park that has contributed to the betterment of the lives of the residents of Gross Point Park. Whereas James E. Robson has been a longtime resident on Beacons Field, where he and Kathy, his wife, have raised two children. Whereas James E. Robson had a highly regarded law enforcement professional career, having served in the Wayne County Sheriff's Department and on the Wayne County Airport Police where he retired as a commander. Whereas James E. Robson has been known as a champion of the Northwest Sector, also known as West Park. He tirelessly addressed resident concerns from small matters to critical blight mitigation issues. He was part of the establishment of the Tifa District to bring new revenue sources to his neighborhood. Whereas James E. Robson was very supportive and always sought for, fought for crucial funding for the outstanding Public Safety Department and advocated for equipment upgrades and training. Whereas James E. Robson served on the Planning Commission, Tifa Board, Recreation Commission, Ordnance Review Committee, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and Chair of the Personnel Committee, and served as Mayor Protem from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one. He has worked with three mayors and many council members, attending more than three hundred and fifty meetings. Jim was an important advisor to the three mayors he worked with, offering his knowledge and expertise from his institutional background. Whereas James E. Robson had achieved important milestones for the city, the establishment of the Downtown Development Authority, Tax and Current Finance Authority, the Gross Point Park Foundation, the transition to a Public Safety Department, whereby separating the police and fire, the revitalization of the Northwest Sector, the redevelopment of Jefferson, and many more. Now, therefore be it resolved that Mayor Hodges and members of council recognize James E. Robson for his almost three decades of dedication and commitment as a well-respected council member for the city of Gross Point Park. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Viner, discussion? Yes, Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, um, is Jim here too?
Yes.
Hey, I want to say thank you, Jim, um, your resilience always surprised me, and I, I want to acknowledge your gentlemanlike demeanor through uh, through most of your servitude. I'm, I'm glad I'll get to see your calm smile while we lift some weights together real soon. Um, I hope you, I wish you relaxation and happiness while enjoying certain Mondays each month uh, throughout, throughout the rest of your life. Uh, thank you again for everything you've done for our town and its residents, I hope to see you soon.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rowland, other comments? Councilmember Viner?
So the resolution can articulate it better than I can, but I just want to say to uh, former council member Robson, I consider myself very lucky for knowing you, so thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Councilmember Viner, Councilmember Gallagher?
Uh, I also would like to thank you, um, Mr. Robson, for all your service and your time, and also for your mentorship. I would not be sitting in this seat if it wasn't for your guidance and your help. Um, and uh, I, I just, I thank you for it. I wish we were sitting, you were sitting again at the table with us. Um, I found your voice also very calming and your demeanor always very professional. You listen um, intently, and you always have sound advice, so you will be missed. Uh, and uh, I just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done and you continue to do. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember Gallagher, are there any other comments? I will add that um, Mr. Robson, who I affectionately called MP for Mayor Protem, and you're an early riser too, right? Um, which I know because of our many five or six AM emails, one of which was this morning, actually, which is me, uh, which means this community has really gotten a lot uh, out of you because of the long days that you're willing to put in. Um, and that your commitment to this community, your years of service, and the stake you've planted here uh, with your beautiful wife, wife Kathy have certainly made a difference in the lives of Gross Point Park residents. I know I personally will miss your institutional knowledge, your passion for the Northwest Sector, your wit. I got to admit, I love your wit, um, and your intellect. So thank you for generously giving of yourself for all of these years. With that clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Fluid? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Raylan?
Yes.
And Viner?
Yes.
And also, Mayor Hodges, I have, I have to point out that we didn't do a roll call for Mayor Denner's resolution.
That's correct.
We had a motion and support, but we didn't do a roll call.
Okay, we can go back and do that, and just so the.
Do that right now?
Yes, I think that's important, um, so let's go ahead. Clerk, could you please call the roll regarding, well, first I should say, the resolution acknowledging uh, member, former member Robson has been approved, and now we will go back to the motion, uh, author or acknowledging uh, Mayor Denner, uh, which was, uh, well, I'm not going to remember the moved and the seconded, but um, it happened. And actually, I made it, I should remember that, right? And Mayor Protem Caulfield.
I get it.
By Gallagher, great. So clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Raylan?
Yes.
And Viner?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries as well. Now, going back to former Mayor Protem, Robson, would you like to say a few words?
Well, but of course, Mayor, thank you, thank you so much. Uh, this is indeed is a great honor. I don't know who wrote the resolution, but they can write for me anytime they want. Very honorable, thank you so, so much. Uh, it has been twenty-eight years, it seemed to have gone by fast. It is my highest honor to have been of service. It's a privilege to serve the citizens of Gross Point Park. As the resolution stated, three mayors, I count twenty-three council members, hundreds of volunteer citizens, and the best workforce anywhere around. And I think this is a good time, and it was a good time for me to exit, because as I look around our city, and city hall, uh, I can see we are in excellent, excellent hands going forward. We have a very tenacious, dedicated, talented, hard-working city manager in Nick Seislin. I have worked with Nick for two years, or a little bit more, and uh, just a great a spot-on guy in terms of, of learning things, addressing things, a multitasker. We are blessed to have Nick. We are further blessed to have our city clerk, Jane Blayhut, and her awesome, awesome staff, anybody that comes to city hall and has just served uh, by some great group of caring professionals, and uh, they are to be appreciated. We have other departments too, I want to shout out to Director Gerald. Done such a great job since he's come on board, I'm very proud of his uh, community outreach. Director Chad Craig over at Parks, Pat Thomas, public service, who am I missing? I think I caught, caught it real well, our city manager as well. Uh, they, they are a great group of professionals, and we're blessed to have, have them aboard. And as for you, council, I couldn't be more confident in all of you going forward and looking backwards, each and every one of you. Here your, your dedication, uh, in your hearts, on your sleeps every single day, and what you bring in terms of your talent and your leadership to the council will certainly uh, help the city in moving forward. We are blessed as well to have every one of you. I wish you well as you bring in our seventh member later on. It's a long night, I don't want to be a laborer too much, but a couple more things. I want to give a shout out to, uh, if you will, my law enforcement brothers in blue, the Department of Public Safety. Brothers and sisters, ladies and gentlemen, never, ever think that you're not highly respected. Uh, you are highly professional, you're the same great group you were today, two years ago, five years ago. Well-trained and, and has the support of at least ninety-nine percent of our population. The most comments any of us ever get are comments about our Public Safety Department, what a great group of pros they are. And then lastly, uh, shout out to the other folks that are getting uh, honored tonight. Bob Denner, you know what I think of you, you know, great mayor you have been. And I also want to recognize, shout out to, to former council member Reed and uh, McConnell, and uh, who am I missing, Fluid, just, just left. Uh, I can say that I've worked with you over the years, and I certainly respect your hard work. It is a thankless job, and I really appreciate and respect all the hard work you have done, and I wish you all as well in the future. So that's it, thank you very much, and God bless everybody.
Thank you very much, uh, former Mayor Protem James Robson, James Robson, good luck to you. Uh, with that, City Manager Seislin, did you have something to add?
Oh.
That's my cursor, I'm sorry, there was a hand on your face, and I thought it was your. Uh, with that, if you could bring Ms. Reed um, on camera, I have the honor of presenting uh, making a motion to present a resolution in her honor, which reads as follows. Whereas Laurie A. Reed served on the city council from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, serving a total of four years. Whereas Laurie Reed is being recognized for her leadership, vision, and dedication and commitment to Gross Point Park that has contributed to the betterment of the lives of the residents of Gross Point Park. Whereas Laurie A. Reed has been a Gross Point Park resident since nineteen ninety. Whereas Laurie A. Reed, with her husband Donald, raised three children. Whereas Laurie A. Reed served on the Beautification Commission, the Recreation Commission, the Communications Committee, the Ordnance Review Committee, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, the Public Safety Committee, the Ad-Hoc Public Schools Committee, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and volunteered her time with the Marina Subcommittee and the Gross Point Public Schools Blue Ribbon Committee. Whereas Laurie A. Reed was the Gross Point Park liaison to Fox Creek Artscape and was a speaker, piece in the streets at the Burrwood Wall, two thousand eighteen, Gross Point Artists Association Alter Crossing Advisory Committee. Whereas Laurie A. Reed was an advocate for the use of a professional master plan consultant and voted with the council to pursue a formal professional master plan in January of two thousand twenty, which is a recognized best practice in urban planning. Whereas Laurie A. Reed voted with council to move DPW to a brand-new state-of-the-art facility on Mack Avenue. Whereas Laurie A. Reed drafted the resolution of this, to the State House Committee on Commerce and Tourism to protect our local zoning from state preemption, which would have allowed short-term rental as a permitted use of all residential property, which was unanimously adopted by city council. Whereas Laurie Reed is most proud of her advocacy for residents of Gross Point Park. She was accessible and helpful throughout her service as a member of the Gross Point Park City Council. Now, therefore be it resolved that Mayor Hodges and members of council recognize Laurie Reed for her service as a council member for the city of Gross Point Park. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilmember Gallagher, seconded, thank you. Uh, now that that motion is on the table, is there discussion? Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, um, thank you, Laurie. Uh, you were a main reason that I ran for council, uh, teaching me residents that should come, that, teaching me that residents should come first at every turn. I'm going to miss your calm, honest, and ethical approach to all of our decision-making. I thank you for your dedication to our town and all you've instilled in our processes. Pushing proper governance and transparency is something we all on council, I know, will continue working on. I also want to thank you for introducing me to the amazing East Jefferson Chalmers District and many wonderful neighbors living there. I hope to laugh with you often and discuss our great city together, and I want to say thank you for everything again. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rowland, Councilmember Viner, did I see you? No, anybody else have comments?
Maybe internet connection issues.
I would like to say, Ms. Reed, you brought a legal mind to the table that helped to advance a number of key issues, and that will be missed. Um, as will your willingness to jump in and tackle the uh, the details of complicated initiatives. And I know how much you care about our community, and it showed by your desire to help professionalize our systems and processes as we move forward. And that's certainly important, and as Councilmember Rowland said, something we will continue uh, under this body. And I will always admire your commitment to our residents and appreciate all you've brought to the table. Um, so sincere thanks to you for your service, and best wishes for much success and satisfaction going forward. So unless there is additional commentary, I would ask that the clerk please call the roll regarding the motion to honor uh, former council member Laurie Reed.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Raylan?
Yes.
And Viner?
Motion carries, um, thank you. And with that, former council member Reed, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, and I'll be brief, um, your meeting is getting long. Um, I would like to start off by congratulating um, Bob Denner, Jim Robson, Ame Fluid, and Darcy McConnell, um, who are being honored tonight, and thank them for their service. Um, and I would like to thank the council for um, taking the time to do this, it's certainly not expected. Um, I would also like to um, say congratulations to Marty McMillan on his appointment to city council. I've known Marty and his family for as long as I've lived here, and our families go back uh, even longer than that. Um, I enjoyed serving with you on the Recreation Commission, and you are a great addition to our city council, and it's probably about time that someone from the McMillan family served on this body. Um, but most of all, and most importantly, I want to thank the residents. Um, serving my community was an honor, it was an honor to serve you, and I thank you for the trust that you put into me. Um, and I approached every um, aspect of my service with the residents in mind. Um, and I um, I still care deeply about this community and the residents, and I will always be a champion for them. Um, I encourage this body to keep that in mind and to continue to ask your questions in the public forum. That's how democracy works, that's transparency. The residents need to understand um, the process behind the decisions that the council makes, and make sure that the questions that they have are answered in a public forum. So I encourage you to continue to do that. I know these meetings can get tedious, um, we only um, would meet once a month. Um, so uh, I think it's important that, to give the residents that thorough uh, meeting and um, that ensure them that all of the issues have been thoroughly covered. Um, I like to wish all of you on this body the best of luck. I um, I, I think I've said to all of you individually, and I'll say collectively, um, I'm always happy to um, talk about the city with you and offer my perspective. Um, I, I, I make that um, myself available to all of you. And um, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, and um, with that, um, have a good evening.
Thank you, former council member Reed, we appreciate your time and your service. Um, moving forward, I would like to make a motion to honor uh, former colleague Ame Fluid. Um, and that resolution reads as follows. Whereas Ame Fluid served on the city council from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one, serving a total of two years. Whereas Ame Fluid is being recognized for her leadership, vision, dedication, and commitment to Gross Point Park that has contributed to the betterment of the lives of the residents of Gross Point Park. Whereas Ame Fluid has been a Gross Point Park resident for seven years, and has raised her son with her husband and their child, and their child attended the Gross Point Public Schools. Whereas Ame Fluid initiated the creation of the Human Rights Ordinance that guaranteed all individuals of Gross Point Park be treated the same, and the Pride Month Proclamations in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. Whereas during the pandemic, Ame Fluid coordinated initiatives with the Gross Point Chamber of Commerce Whereas during the pandemic, I may fluid coordinated initiatives with the Gross Point Chamber of Commerce and Gross Point Library System. And asked landlords in the city to provide COVID relief and grant aid to businesses along with contributing to the sustained Gross Point Park Initiative. Whereas I may fluid served on the Communication Committee, was the council representative for the Michigan Municipal League, served on the Public Works uh, Service. Excuse me, served on the Public Service Works Committee and the Chair of the Sustainability Committee. Whereas I may fluid served on the Board of WGP and is a member of the League of Women Voters and the Gross Point Memorial Church. Whereas I may fluid advocated for resident engagement in all areas, including changes to meeting agendas that allowed resident voices to be heard. Whereas I may fluid supported the new master plan process. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Hodges and members of council recognize I may fluid for her service to the city of Gross Point Park. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rowland. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Rowland.
I'll keep it going. Uh, I'm a, uh, your dedication to our residents will not be forgotten as Mayor Hodges mentioned. I want to say thank you for all the discussions we had with our so-called crew. Uh, we helped push for resident engagement, which had always lead to better governance and I know hundreds of people that never paid attention are now dialed in more. Uh, you brought forth so many resident-focused initiatives that were somewhat taboo to discuss in our town, but needed to be discussed. Thank you for much more that I can't list here tonight. Uh, I wish you a safe and peaceful move and hope to keep in touch for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rowland. Other comments? Uh, I'm, I can't believe I'm calling you member or a former member fluid as of just a few moments ago. But I really wish we could have had more time together since most of our service occurred during the pandemic, but. Even so, it has always been clear to me how passionate you are about the people of our community, especially the human side of it and the need for justice and equity and I. Find that admirable and sincerely thank you for your leadership and wish you the best as you start this new chapter. So congratulations. Um, and with that, if there's no additional discussion, I would ask that the clerk please uh, please call the roll for the uh, resolution honoring I may fluid.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Ann Viner?
Yes, I'm sorry, my interconnection's getting choppy.
We heard you. Thank you, Councilmember Viner. With that, uh, the motion carries. Former council member fluid, would you like to say anything?
Of course I want to say something. Um, and, and I wrote it down. I, I always think I'm better at writing than I am off the cuff, but. Um, most importantly, I want to say that it has been truly an honor to serve and I'm sorry to leave before my term is finished. I also want to say how much I appreciate the residents who've reached out to show their support and convey their well wishes. I am delighted that I was able to help your concerns be heard and addressed. Acting as an intermediary on concerns between residents and city administration was my most important job and I'm proud of the way I did that. Of course, there are things I wanted to accomplish but did not. There's a limit to what city administration can work on at one time. I hope that someday soon sustainability efforts will be prioritized. I have also suggested that the city work with our neighbors to find a solution to the pressing need we have throughout our community for childcare options. This is an initiative that should be prioritized because like demonstrating that we're a welcoming and inclusive community. It's something we must have to keep new families moving into the park. In the spirit of the holiday season, I made a short wish list. I wish for the park. A comprehensive emergency plan. The utilization of professional expertise. Business organizations that are not politicized. An independent news source. Real estate deals and contracts that are finalized in public view. Detailed documentation for every project. Renters who vote so their interests can be represented. Equal treatment, no matter what street you live on or how long you've lived here. Information shared equally among all council members. And residents who never feel voiceless. Thank you to those residents, known and unknown, who've worked so hard to bring change. Thank you to Vacas, who I didn't really know until we were running for office together. He is always upbeat and supportive. And to Laurie and Darcy. Whose integrity and deliberative approach will undoubtedly be missed. I wish this new council well. This is a beautiful corner of the world. And I'm going to miss this little oligarchy. Thank you for allowing me to serve.
Thank you, former, former member fluid and best of luck to you. I understand your boxes are just about packed and you leave this weekend. So good luck to you in a, in a beautiful holiday season with your family. That brings us to our final resolution for the evening, but certainly not our least. Um, appreciated resolution for the evening. So I will make the motion that we introduce the resolution honoring Darcy McConnell, which reads as follows. Whereas Darcy McConnell was appointed to the Gross Point Park City Council by unanimous vote of the sitting council members in November of two thousand twenty to fill a vacancy. Whereas Darcy McConnell, oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I'm reading from my hard copy and I know some edits were made. Let me, here we go. I'm gonna read from my, I'm gonna start again and read from my um, phone here. Uh, whereas Darcy McConnell was appointed to the Gross Point Park City Council by unanimous vote of the sitting council members in November two thousand twenty to fill a vacancy. Whereas Darcy McConnell's appointment made her the first African American to serve on the Gross Point Park City Council. Whereas Darcy McConnell supported businesses and residents impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. She implemented a Food for the Holidays program and the Sustain GPP initiative. Whereas Darcy McConnell helped the city speak with one voice against racism following the display of a symbol of hate. Whereas Darcy McConnell, when the June twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth storm event devastated our community. Met with council colleagues, provided residents with useful updates, delivered claim forms and secured a visit by Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence. Whereas Darcy McConnell kept residents informed. She hosted virtual coffee hours, two tele-town halls on the COVID nineteen vaccine. And another with FEMA on the State Consumer Protection Agency. Whereas Darcy McConnell educated residents about city government, she advocated for videos of committee meetings added to the city's website. Whereas Darcy McConnell advocated for a broader search process for the city's Public Safety Director. Leading to one of the most diverse fields of candidates in the park's history. Whereas Darcy McConnell successfully advocated that federal rescue fund dollars be used to help. Upgrade the city's infrastructure and reimburse residents for storm mitigation remedies such as downspout disconnects. Now therefore be it resolved that on this day, the Gross Point Park City Council Mayor and City Manager. Recognize and honor Darcy McConnell for her dedication and full year of public service. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rowland. With that, is there any discussion? Want to continue, Councilmember Rowland? You don't want to break the mission now?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Hodges. Uh, Darcy, um, wow, uh, you came in and added a different level of resident engagement and outreach that we had not seen in our town. You thought outside the box and crafted many unique ways to support. Our hurting businesses and our residents in need, uh, while we all dealt with our worldwide pandemic. Experiencing new concerns many had never faced before. You just kept going and going and going, no matter how bad the newspaper falsely trashed you. I know you aren't going away. Thank God. And I look forward to using your creative mindset to continue to move our city forward. While keeping residents in our focus. Thanks for everything you have done for our town. Much love. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rowland. Other comments? Um, former council member uh, McConnell, I will never forget the moment you uh, earned your seat on City Council and the honor. It was such an honor to experience that historic moment firsthand and it was certainly an exhilarating one and you, from that point forward, served with energy and commitment. And accomplished a lot in a very short period of time. And you've helped move our community forward and have served as a catalyst that will continue to inspire and transform us in a meaningful way. So I sincerely thank you and hope you will uh, enthusiastically share your talents and treasures. We need you. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to have served with you. Um, with that clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Ann Viner?
Yes.
With that, the motion carries. Former council member McConnell, would you like to say a few words?
I would, although I think uh, I wish it maybe was alphabetical so that. Some people didn't steal my thunder. Um, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to the people who are on council. Uh, at the time of my appointment for giving me the opportunity to serve. I appreciate that uh, your trust in me. I also want to thank the current members uh, who supported this resolution tonight. Um, it's, it is uh, an honor to be honored for your public service. I appreciate the recognition. And to echo what Councilmember Reed said, um, my biggest thanks goes to the residents who uh, either collaborated with me on uh, the initiatives that we put forth. Or uh, who trusted me to handle their issues. Um, I really did enjoy um, serving the public and um. As I mentioned to many, um, I interned in my senior high school with the Lansing City Council President. So. He taught and my job was constituent outreach. So that was sort of ingrained embedded in who I am. So it was really my pleasure to do that. And I do have my own uh, request or uh, would hope that this body will honor its pledge to unify the city. This was a very divisive election and um, I think the residents are owed that much. So I hope you'll honor that commitment and. Continue to build on what we talked about, govern in a manner that represents best practices, transparencies and continues to better empower the residents. So. Thank you again for the recognition. Uh, and thanks, I forgot to say for the friendship and mentorship of my colleagues who were. Helpful to me every step of the way, particularly with the onboarding and reached out. And that was really every single member. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, former council member McConnell. I'm sure there are many people that are proud of you, um, myself being one of them. All right, moving forward, we are now at candidate interviews. I'm sure some of you are probably hoping for a brief recess. I would like to recommend that we get through the interviews because at the conclusion of that, there will be a need for a recess so that votes can be tallied. If you're all. Um, comfortable motoring through to that point, um, I will continue on with the agenda.
Cool.
All right, great. Um, you all have letters of steel. Um, all right, so we'll now move to uh, item three under new business, which is candidate interviews, just to set the stage and as a reminder, the community as to why we're here. With the resignation of City Council Member Fluid earlier this evening, we now have a vacancy to fill. There are two years remaining on her term and the charter grants this body the authority to fill her position. Within sixty days, that clock begins ticking today, uh, or a special election is required. This vacancy is one of two, the first of which was filled last week with the appointment of Councilmember Mc- uh, McMillan. Um, and we now have a pool of five candidates with the withdrawal of Mr. Eckert's um, application. Uh, and also uh, Mr. Benel continues to be part of the pool. Uh, however, he's unable to be with us this evening. Uh, I thank all of these individuals for their willingness to serve. Their skillsets are clearly notable and we do have a just difficult decision ahead of us tonight. So with that, Mr. Seisland and Clerk Blayhut have developed a process for identifying a final candidate and I turn uh, it over to them to move us forward.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Hodges, members of council and the public. So as Mayor Hodges stated, um, we did, Mr. Benel um, will not be in attendance. Uh, we did have one candidate, uh, Mr. Richard Eckert, who had uh, submitted uh, his resignation dropping out of the race. So we officially have uh, Mr. Brian Brenner, Mr. Jay Benel, Mr. Dan Clark, Mr. Frank Ferry. And Mr. Michael McCush. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through asking uh, these candidates and Clerk Blayhut as well, three questions. They will be three minutes each. And as we get towards the end of this, what we're going to do is similar to our last uh, City Council interview process. Uh, the City Council will send to the clerk and I after a brief recess. An email stating their tally of their one candidate for City Council. After we reconvene from that brief recess, uh, Clerk Blayhut and I will tally the votes publicly of each council member. At, and after that time, it is uh, the decision of the City Council. Whether they would like to appoint, consider, or move uh, to another meeting for this appointment. So with that said, um. I'm going to go ahead and get started and I'm going to ask for Mr. Brian Brenner to please turn on his camera as he will be our first candidate. Brian, at your pleasure.
Hello.
Hi, Brian. And so uh, I'm going to go ahead and share our screen for a second. So Brian, I will be the one to ask the three questions. There'll be three minutes each timed and I'll go ahead and get started. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What are the top three priorities for Gross Point Park?
Uh, a pretty clear water infrastructure. Uh, again. As recently as Friday night, uh, wide awake half the night as the water, as the rain was pouring. So the first priority is extraordinarily clear, excruciatingly clear, I would say. Uh, we need immediate relief, uh, or as soon as humanly possible, uh, that the water situation is going to be clearly two-pronged. Uh, first prong being something that hopefully we can address locally in terms of an emergency relief valve or something similar. Uh, something that we can get done in a reasonable amount of time because I for one have absolutely no faith, uh, every time that it rains. Uh, that my basement will not back up. I think there are several uh, sitting council members that would probably agree with me. Uh, the second part of the, that solution obviously will be the larger one, working with Great Lake, Great Lakes Water, our other municipal uh, partners that have involvement. Uh, and that will clearly be a much longer uh, process. I, I expect anyway, there, the infrastructure problems are, are greater. Um, but again, the two-pronged problem of fixing, uh, are keeping the water from backing up in our basements first. Getting something done locally, uh, in case of emergency to keep the, the sewage from backing up in our basements, working with Great Lakes Water for the broader solution. And I guess if she would, uh, number three would be obviously the lead water lines by mandate. We need to get them done and the clock is ticking on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. What services or departments of the city interest you the most and why?
Interest me. Uh, honestly, uh, I am. Uh, uh, I guess this is actually kind of related to our weather issues. Uh, I, I'm interested, very interested in sustainability. Personally, I, as we are getting close here at uh, Lake Point and Avondale to uh, tearing off our roof in the. Coming season or two, uh, looking into personally, I would like to put up uh, solar panels. And also redoing our gutters and getting water catchment systems. Uh, I think. It is just the duty of responsible human beings at this point and uh, to, to invest in sustainables. Uh, it's quite clear. For decades now, uh, scientists have been uh, calling for. Basically screaming at the top of their lungs that we need to make choices, make decisions. To uh, lessen our. Our uh, need for fossil fuels and lessen our carbon footprint as that is adding to this. Crazy and unpredictable climate that we seem to see. So. Uh, I would love to see uh, investment in our town and in renewables. Uh, we are a very fortunate town and I think. As such, we have a responsibility to show leadership uh, around the region on that uh, on that front. So that would probably, that would be my primary interest with regards to our commissions. Uh, as I've mentioned before, this isn't directly a commission or committee issue, but I do have continued interest. Uh, very much so in SCAP Center and making sure that we utilize our relationship with them to be benefit both of our residents. And our local businesses.
Okay, and our final question. Please tell us about any other activities, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience. That would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the City Council.
Alright, so here is my case for you to do what, with it what you will. I have done the work to be prepared for this position. For nearly two years, I have attended most all of the council meetings and scores of committee and commission meetings. This includes a two-month period prior to submitting my signatures. Why? I literally attended everything. I did this to broaden my understanding of what's happening in the city. And to make sure that I would have the time necessary to invest in council. I did this because I have tremendous respect for the position and the time involved to diligently execute the duties. I realize there's far more to it, but from a resident perspective, I'm very much up to speed. Our greatest, most immediate needs are clear. The clock is ticking on the deadline to get our lead water lines replaced, our storm sewage upgrades. Again, our two-pronged problem in the near term, we need to quickly as possible. Provide emergency relief to prevent water backups in our basement. This hopefully we can handle expeditiously and locally while working with our regional partners to upgrade Great Lakes Water infrastructure. To handle weather that we are now routinely experiencing. The latter will certainly be slower in coming. For what it's worth, I do have a degree in chemical engineering. So these counts, these are concepts that I'm quite comfortable with. Uh, I won't likely be proposing ideas to the City Manager Patrick Droes, but I do consider my background to be in my favor. Uh, also things to consider, the finishing the. Also, things to consider, the finishing of the public works building, marina upgrades, and if I didn't mention tennis courts, my neighbor would be very disappointed. Additionally, we have many suggestions to consider coming out of our master plan update and recent parking study. While additional parking will never be a popular choice, I was excited to hear some bigger thinking regarding secondary uses for the lots to benefit the community. We also need to figure out how to pay for these massive upcoming bills. It's imperative that we're financially responsible, frugal, thorough and creative in our thinking and maintain positive relationships with local philanthropy, some of whom have hinted at an interest in helping with these manners. Our most exciting project, while not technically the cities, is the SCOP Center. We have a great opportunity to enrich our residents' lives while adding additional support to our local business. This is an area where I have much firsthand experience with the mutual benefit of a collaborative relationship between a thriving theater and local business. We must take full advantage of this opportunity. And of course, there's Trombley. We are extraordinarily fortunate to have several on council already that have invested a ton of effort in support of Trombley. I think this is a prime example of where we all actually agree. I honestly believe that we agree on most issues. A quick check of recent council voting records would confirm this. I just suppose it doesn't make for much fun on social media to focus on areas of agreement. I'm here before you once again because I believe in this team. I know most of you and some of you quite well. There's a ton to achieve and I know this group can get it done. I asked for your vote because I know that I too will be a diligent and productive member of this team. Thank you.
Mr. Brenner, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Jay Benel is unavailable, and so we're gonna move on to former councilmember Dan Clark. Dan, if you could turn on your camera or acknowledge that you are here. Dan, I see your name on the screen. Could you unmute yourself, please? Let's try one more time. I heard you for a second.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. And so former councilmember Clark, Jane Blayhut will be asking the questions. And so Jane, if you'd like to go ahead at your pleasure, we can get started.
Hello, Dan. What are the top three priorities for Grosse Pointe Park?
Well, let me take a moment, a few moments of my time to thank those who recently departed the council. And for those who recently arrived, it's a, it's, it's something, it's a, it's a great service that you've all performed or will be performing. And I would say that any government has a primary responsibility to ensure the safety and security of its citizenry. So I would place public safety as one of my top priorities. I would indicate that government is, it is very important for government to maintain efficiency and maintain good stewardship of scarce resources. After all, you can't really address problems unless you have the means to do so. In that light, I am concerned about unfunded liabilities that relate to pensions and healthcare costs that are bound to rise in the future, our fund balance. So that would be a priority in my judgment because we have to finance the efforts. And it looks like we, we have a lot of capital improvements that we have ahead of us. And then, in addition, I think finally, the amenities that are provided to our residents, not just our services, but our amenities are second to none. And we have, over many decades, looked toward constant improvement. And so I would say that another priority of mine would always have something in mind in terms of how we can make things nicer for our community. I think that summarizes pretty well my three priorities. Thank you.
The second question is, what services or departments of the city interest you the most and why?
Well, that's interesting. As Chair of the Personnel Review Committee for many years, actually, I was a member for many, many decades. I would say that that's of interest to me because the council has an oversight responsibility for those who are at-will employees that are evaluated by the council. And good personnel management is pretty critical. So that would be one of my principal interests and something that I would bring to the council in terms of many years of experience. The second thing I think that would interest me is our ordinances and the ordinance review committee. I chaired that committee for many years. My own view is that government is best when it governs least, especially when it comes to ones that use of their personal property. However, we live in a community and the chief function of the council is legislative in the sense that rules and regulations are promulgated. And it's important that those rules not impinge upon property rights and yet address the necessary rules and regulations that we need to have in order to live in a civil society. On the third level would be, I mean, I'm sorry, planning. I was a member of the Planning Commission and there isn't anything really more critical to the success of a community than long-term planning. So, and that has been addressed over the last few years. There's been a great focus on a need for a fully developed master plan and the referral to professionals who could assist us in determining how best to prepare for the future. So planning is another area that I think I might be able to bring to the council the wealth of experience that I've had in government.
Thank you. And the final question is, please tell us about any other activities, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the city council?
Well, obviously, the first thing that comes to mind are my thirty-two years of experience on that governing body. But I submitted a great deal of material because the application process would just not have made it possible had I not attached a material that pertains to the various involvements I've had, both on a volunteer level in the community and the community at large, our larger ecosystem. And in addition, the kind of activities that I was engaged in while I was a US government employee. So I think that, I, I was on personnel. I was very interested in succession planning and continuity of operations. I never really expected that I would be planning succession with respect to my own appointment to the city council. But it is critical that we prepare for the future. Just with respect to our city clerk, Jane, she's nearing retirement. I think about five years ago, Jane, you said you were gonna leave in five years. And so that shows the, the need for us to have some depth in terms of skills, knowledge, and ability that is needed to perform the budget and various other functions of government. I would ask that the council refer to my KSA's, their knowledge, skills, and abilities, material that I submitted with my application because it's, it's always difficult to extol one's own virtues. I'm just not brought up to, to do that sort of thing. But the, the council, as it's currently constituted, has four years of experience. And I think what I would bring to the council is a institutional knowledge. And I would bring to the council congeniality of respect for the opinions of others, a willingness to listen, which is really quite critical. And recognize that the council is a policymaking body and that it needs to assist city management rather than interfere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. I hope, I can't see anybody else, so I just would like to say hi.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, next candidate is Mr. Frank Ferry. Frank, if you have a camera enabled, please do so, or please at least acknowledge your presence that you are here. Frank, are you available? Councilmember Hodges, maybe we'll move on to our next candidate and go back to Mr. Frank Ferry. Mr. Michael McCush, if you could please turn on your camera, acknowledge your presence.
I'm right here.
Hi, Mike. Okay.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good. We're gonna go through three questions. That'll be three minutes each, and so we're gonna go ahead and get started.
Okay.
Mike, what are the top three priorities for Grosse Pointe Park?
Okay, I would, first one I have to say is infrastructure and, and solutions to alleviate the flooding issues we have from the times you see floods all over the straits to just the ability to, the discussion earlier from the group about having the ability to have a relief valve to give the, the city the option and the ability to move water away from people's basements and out into the water, out into the lake. Makes so much sense. And then I hear about the downspout mitigation discussion. You know, there should be a real push for that to, you know, everyone should have the downspouts cut off and the, the push to have it pull out of the system to have another relief point. But there seems like there's a lot of opportunity there that could help cause, help prevent the issue. It's just that I live, where I live, my sister-in-law lives on the corner and every time it rains, she always gets nervous because, you know, the water comes up to her house almost and it's like, we're down there cleaning the sewer, the sewer out and all getting all the debris off the roads, especially this time of year when we've got the leaves in the street and, and sticks flying all over lately, just coincidentally with the big winds we had and at the same time with, from the storm. Second, I'd like to address the parks. I mean, parks are really key to everybody here. It adds to the quality of life, and this includes the, the marina. The marina seems to be in disrepair when I, when I go for my walks down there from the, you know, the blacktop that's the main walkway to the, the individual docks that are out there. They seem to be almost dangerous with the temporary structures and electricity that seems to be near the water that seems to warrant some, some immediate action there. And then third, balancing our budget and maximizing the use of our finite resources. We've got these unfunded liabilities, and we've got capital improvements. So we need to balance what we have and, and make progress in all areas, knowing we can't do it all at once, but knowing that if we have a planned, five, seven-year plan, we could get to where we need to be. So that would be my, the top three priorities that I address.
Thank you. Next question. What services or departments of the city interest you the most and why?
First off, finance, interest you the most department. And reason being, mentioned a little earlier, the challenges we have with our budget, balancing it and all the needs that, that are out there, from capital improvements to infrastructure to development and, you know, addressing that, the whole area, I mean, finance encompasses a lot. I was looking at the budget and it's a, it's a long budget and that, a lot of opportunities to, to review and make sure our resources are going into the right, the right bucket. The second place I would look at would be the planning and make sure we're, you know, we've got a long-term plan, make sure we stick to it and make sure, one, make sure we finish the plan and make sure we prioritize and emphasize the priorities for the community to move forward and make sure it's the, you know, it's a place people wanna stay and, and, you know, grow up in, stay in and invest in and also to draw visitors to the community to make it a destination and not just someplace you drive through. And third, public safety, making sure we are doing the right things in public safety in all aspects. Safety's a big deal for, for our residents. And I think, you know, I think it's a largest budgets expenditure also. So it's one, one department I think we need to make sure it's a, earlier presentation by the director was great. And, and I've, I've been here for fifty years and I'm so excited about the public safety, the response time and it just, the different officers I've met, I think they do a great job. And I think they need to be supported because they have a lot of challenges and I know their job's not easy. So I just think that's an area that we, we need to focus on and make sure it's the right thing because safety is a big deal in our community. Thank you very much.
Okay, and our final question. Please tell us about any other activities, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the city council?
Okay, to start, you know, professionally, I've got, you know, background in finance, spent a lot of time on analysis and budgeting, strategic finance planning, five-year plans to make sure you get goals and align those goals with where you want to be. I've had experience as a small business owner, so I've had aspects of, of customer service to dealing internal and external financing and business plans and banks and things. So that's, that's been a great experience. But most importantly, it's been a resident of Grosse Pointe for really every stage of my life. You know, I've been here, went to grade school at St. Clair, graduated from Grosse Pointe South. I was a resident while I was, got a degree at Wayne State and got my MBA at U of D. So I've been a resident through all phases of my, my life. So I was able to enjoy the community there. I raised two children here. So I feel that having that experience of all those different phases, I can connect with a lot of different residents as I, as I live, the street I live on where you see new people coming in with families, young families, it's, it's great to talk to them and it's, and they, they really enjoy getting feedback and some, some background on how things are and just makes them feel better that they're part of something, a neighborhood that's a really great place to be and a place they want to stay in and not just stop in for two years and move on. a neighborhood that's a really great place to be and a place they want to stay in and not just stop in for two years and move on. So I mean, the neighborhood I live in, the, the people have been here for, I mean, I think the newest ones like four years, but you know, it goes up to 30, 35, 40, 50 years. So they just, people get here and stay here. They just like it. But, you know, using those lifelong experiences along with my decision-making skills, I've got excellent listening skills. I just think that provides a good balanced approach as, as a council member. I also spend time working with, we've kind of adopted a, an inner-city young man that we mentor as a family. So we spend time with him navigating the, the foster system and that's taught me a lot. It's really opened my eyes to issues and challenges young people have. And I think having that would be great. And also I, I've just spent a lot of time going through the park and, and seeing what, what possibilities there are. I've spent a lot of time on my bike and walking around and, you know, using the, the different, you know, the part, the point hardware and different establishments to encourage and support them. So I just love the park. It's been great for me.
Thank you, Michael. That's our final question and I appreciate your time. Mayor Hodges, I'm going to go ahead and try again for Mr. Frank Ferry. Frank, are you on this call or available to turn on your camera? Mr. Frank Ferry, are you available? Mayor Hodges, I do not have Mr. Ferry available. So what I would suggest at this point, if you'd like me, for me to proceed, the city council at this time, what they will consider doing is to email their preferred candidate, one single candidate to the city clerk and myself. And at the, after that time, after the tallyed up, the clerk and I will read that roll call. And so I would suggest we reconvene at about maybe nine forty.
Yes, and, and I, City Attorney Hollitt, do we need a motion for that recess or can we just agree that we reconvene at nine forty?
We can do a motion just by voice load on the recess.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion that we move into recess?
I have one question for recess.
Sorry, Mayor Hodges, I have one question.
I think Councilman Relon has a question first.
Let's get the motion on the table and then discuss. And Councilmember McMillan, I want you to be heard tonight, so I'm going to give you the motion making. Um, and who, do I have a second? Council, Mayor Protem Caulfield, was that you?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, all right, discussion, Councilmember Relon.
Yeah, last time we didn't have discussion. Are, are we allowed to have discussion this time? Because I'm, personally, I'm pretty torn. All these guys are great. I want to see what other people are thinking from our council. I don't know if that's part of the process or not, but this process is really hard to choose someone that we've only talked to for 20 minutes or so for a two-year term. So I would like to have some discussion to hear what my, my teammates are thinking and, and who they're supporting and why, to see some strengths that I may not know of and and something like that. I don't know. Thank you.
That would be appropriate, Councilmember Relon, either before a motion is put on the table or once a motion is on the table, we can certainly discuss it before there is a vote. So absolutely. And that would have been acceptable during the last selection as well. If, if someone would have requested to have dialogue. So I hope that answers your question. And if there are no other questions, we would, I would ask that clerk, please call the roll regarding the motion to recess. I think I'll add another two minutes to nine forty-two, if that's acceptable to Mr. McMillan and Mr. Caulfield.
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion? Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Ann Veener?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll look to reconvene at nine forty-two PM. Thank you.
Mayor Hodges, question, am I, can you see me right now? I've had some internet connection issues. I want to know if I need to drop off and re-log or is it okay now?
We can see you, but your lips aren't keeping up with you.
You're pixelated.
Yeah, you're pixelated, Max. I would log back in.
I'm going to leave the meeting then rejoin. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, with that, the recording has begun again. If there's a motion to reconvene the meeting at nine forty-five PM, I would entertain that, please.
I motion to reconvene the meeting.
Mayor Protem Caulfield made the motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Relon, Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Ann Veener?
Motion carries. Our meeting is, excuse me, our meeting is reconvened at nine forty-five PM. City Manager Seisland?
Thank you, Mayor Hodges. So Clerk Blayhut and I added up the total. So what I'm going to do is read aloud the vote conducted by each member of council and the mayor. Mayor Michelle Hodges voted for Brian Brenner. Mayor Protem Tom Caulfield voted for Brian Brenner. Councilmember Christine Gallagher voted for Michael McCush. Councilmember Marty McMillan voted for Michael McCush. Councilmember Vicos Rayland voted for Jay Bonnell. And Councilmember Veener voted for Brian Brenner. The totals are as follows, Brian Brenner, three, Jay Bonnell, one, Michael McCush, two.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that tally and that does set the stage for some discussion. Those votes that were just submitted to City Manager Seisland do not commit any of us in any way. I know there was a question regarding that. I wanted to clarify on that. So with that, I would invite discussion prior to a motion or if somebody wanted to get a motion on the table and then we can discuss that, that would be appropriate as well. Is there anyone that would like to kick us off?
I, I guess.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes, we have one vote for Jay. And he did not participate in the, in the series of questions that were just asked today. I just wonder if that's appropriate.
I think in that case, certainly I think that decision will be made once a motion is made and whether or not he shows up as part of that decision. I think we'll tell that tale. Hope that's an appropriate answer, City Manager Seisland. Does that help satisfy your concern, Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Other discussion regarding the decision before us? Councilmember Relon?
Do we need to, thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Do we need to have a motion before we can have discussion?
No, I don't believe, go ahead. I'm sorry, City Attorney.
Sorry, I didn't mean to step on your toes there, but no, there, there, this process is a little bit different because of the nature of it and we can sort of set the process. So you, you guys can proceed sort of how you want, maybe a little bit too broad, but you certainly can have the discussion or somebody can make a motion for a specific candidate and then there will be discussion at that point. But it's permissible to have the discussion before having an actual motion, if you guys so choose to proceed that way.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Councilmember Relon, did you want to, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I would love to hear from my team here on who, why they voted for certain people, what, what aspects do they see? Like I was saying before the recess, I, I really am torn. I, I see four great candidates here. The process we're doing, I don't appreciate the process because we have to do it this way. I'm not blaming anyone. But it'd be nice to have an extra month or so to get some, but I know we all want to get something going soon with our committees and all that. So I'd love to hear from my team on, on who they supported and why, and just to try to add, add value to our vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Veener?
Sure. So I think I'm ready to move forward with it because I mean, if you take a look, the clear frontrunners are the, the top three from, from last time, Mr. McMillan, Councilmember McMillan, I thought he did an excellent job. That's why I voted for him last time. And my two favorites at the last meeting were Mr. McCush and Mr. Brenner. Again, I think of the clear frontrunners today and I'll voice my opinion on both. I think either it'd be a great choice for the council. I believe Mr. McCush has a great skillset. I think he's got an excellent resume. He'd be an asset to the park and I think he can be going forward. That said, I think we've got some major challenges and problems facing the park now. And so one of the major driving forces for me right now is I want somebody who can hit the ground running. Again, you know, Brenner, I believe I've seen his resume. The business owner, guy's got a work ethic. But beyond that, you know, I personally have been very involved in this process for the last two years. I've been attending every meeting, every committee, every, you know, every commission. And of all of the candidates, and this is going back to the last meeting as well, the one person who I always saw in all those meetings with me was Mr. Brenner. He has put in the work. He's been engaged. He's very informed. And again, I think it's a huge asset and that he can jump right into the role right now and I think he can work well with the team. I do want to make another, you know, personal comment. I have gotten to know him over the course of the last year and it's, it's not a secret that he and I are cut from very different cloth politically. But, you know, having talked to him, the one thing we have in common is we both believe strongly in the town and we want to do the work to help the city. So I mean, I think that aspect of it, he helps broaden the perspective on the council and that would be a huge asset. So again, in my mind, I think he is the strongest choice. That's why I voted for him again today.
Thank you, Councilmember Veener. Others who would like to contribute? Councilmember McMillan?
Yes, I, I agree. Both candidates are extremely qualified. The reason I voted for Mike McCush was I thought that he brings a level of calmness. He constantly, when, when people bring something to his attention, he, he thinks before he talks. These are some of the positive things that I took out of the interviews as well. His financial background, I think, is, is critical to, to look at this team that we have here to fit into this team of, of, of council with our mayor. I think he fits in really nicely. I like what he touched on economic development. I think we, it is important that we bring young families into Gross Point Park and stay here. And I think as we develop as a city and, and, and that's the kind of thing we want, families to move in and stay. I think he's extremely intelligent. He's lived here all his life. He knows the city inside and out. And I guess he, he mentioned he does some walking. I think he'll be engaging to the, to the families and have the time to do it. Have the time to put in because, you know, this is my first week on the council and I already know there's a lot more that I thought was going to go into this. So, and it's exciting. So I, I think he brings something to the table that, that we, we certainly could use.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other feedback input?
Yeah, I mean, I will, should probably raise my hand.
Yes, yeah, and, and I should probably be on my toes and recognize you. Please, Mayor Protem Caulfield.
Yeah, I mean, not to reiterate a lot of what Max said. I mean, but honestly, this was a difficult choice for me. I think both final candidates that we're talking about, Brian and Mr. McCush, bring a lot of expertise in areas that we all need. My reason for Brian is, I mean, quite honestly, and I don't want to get into the weeds on this. To me, I looked at it from a resident's perspective overall, and I think Brian checks a lot of boxes. I'll say that, that for a general resident overall. Mike's finance is definitely needed and I would encourage, you know, I, I could see him on our finance board, absolutely, hands down, no questions asked.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Gallagher? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor Hodges. So I take the responsibility of choosing a teammate very seriously. What is important to me is the effect, is the city itself and, and who brings the most value to the city. And I think that the, the skillset that is important is the skillset that contributes to an effective functioning government. And I looked at both candidates as well as the others to identify those skillsets that I think are unique to, that they bring to the table. And the unique skillsets that each has and they each do, which one has a more valuable skillset and which has a broader skillset. While I appreciate that Brian Brenner has attended meetings and listened to council, I can also appreciate like Marty McMillan, who's come to the table and hit the ground running and not necessarily having to sit in every single meeting. When I look at the skillsets that each bring to the table, while each valuable, I see that Marty, I'm sorry, Michael McCush's skillset is much broader and actually unique to the, any of the council members that we have on the council today. His background in finance is instrumental in the functioning of government. The budget itself is the core responsibility of, of, of a functioning government, managing that money. And I believe that the, the experience that he has and his strategic planning for finance is, is important. And I know Jane is doing a great job and has done a great job. And Dan mentioned the fact that maybe she's leaving and he also mentioned the fact for a need for, for, well, at some point retiring, right? We all will. Jane, we don't want you to leave because you're just amazing. But I think that having someone on, on our council who has the depth of experience there is of, of the utmost importance. In terms of the interview today, I think that the questions that were asked and that were answered were, were answered very specifically by Mr. McCush. I was impressed with his ability to be thoughtful and to be concise in what he was saying. And I think that the things that he talked about were very important. The, the infrastructure key, the marina and the parks and the parks being key and the balancing of the budget. All of those things are instrumental for the functioning of our city. What's important to him, finance and a balancing budget, planning and prioritizing against that budget and public safety. Without the three of those key pieces, we don't have an effective functioning government. I do believe that the voice of the people are also important, obviously. The voice of, of the people have voted, the sitting body that we have. And in the past, the voting population made it clear who they wanted in and who they didn't want in. So, and I just think that in terms of, I think it was Dan who mentioned the amount of experience that's on this council. He came up with four years. I'm, I'm not sure if that's the right number, but I think it's a, it's a small number in terms of the experience that we as a body now have. But I think that having someone who has a wealth of experience, not only in business, not only in finance, owning your own business and small business, but the experience that he has in the park. A lifelong park member, a resident rather, and raising his family. I, I just think that he's, he is representative of and what we need as a council member.
Thank you, Councilmember Gallagher. And to round out that discussion, I would like to share my thoughts as well. Really have put a lot of thought into this as all of you have too, and it's, it's because this is a big decision and not an easy one. The good news is our two frontrunners are solid and well-suited and both would serve very well. So for me, that's no longer the primary decision-making factor because that's been established on both fronts. So then it becomes a question of strategy. And this community is diverse and the body serving it should essentially be a cross-section of it. And a big component of this community, in my assessment, is not adequately represented. And I believe they are trusting us to lead for them and I see many of them on this call this evening. And quite frankly, none of us would be in the seats we currently hold without their support. None of us would be. And we can't forget that and we need And we can't forget that. And we need to ensure that they are represented responsibly in a way that contributes effectively to the problem solving, the dialogue, the deliberation, and to the team dynamic. And in a way that strengthens our outcomes because of that diversity of thought, and because we do have good representation on the council, which therefore means we march forward together as a community. None of us want to go back to the days of division, and I don't think we have to settle for that. And with the right leadership and with the right team, we can effectively make that happen. And as I analyze the candidates, and again, it's not about qualifications anymore, because I think there's no question that Mike McCush would serve this community exceptionally well. And if it were a different time, I think without a a a single regret, we could put him in there and and be satisfied with that. But with Brian Brenner, what I see in him is somebody who has successfully built a small business and therefore has management acumen and can touch on many of the things that we are faced with. He has a chemical engineering degree, and he comes from a family of brilliant and accomplished individuals who have built in him an intellect that I think will serve this community well. He's involved in the community. He's raising his family here. He's young. He wants to lead with simple logic and sensibility, and he's not overcome by ideology. He's solid on the issues, and he understands this community. He's decent, kind, smart, committed, calm, reasoned, civil, staked, and quite frankly, fun. And I think that's important, too. And my experience with hiring has been a good choice goes beyond just a resume. It has a lot to do with timing, and that person must fit, and he or she must really propel the organizational culture that we want to establish and complement the team that we are working to build and to do so in a manner that gets results. And I believe Brian Brenner is right for this moment at this time. I mean, he really does complete this team. So I ask each of you to think very seriously about this rationale, because this is an important decision. I know it's not an easy one, and I really wish we could have both of them. But we don't have that luxury. And and I hope whomever is not successful this evening will stay engaged and will share their talents because we need them. But I see nobody who in this pool who is exactly right for this moment, like Brian Brenner is. And that will assure that I've done my duty to make sure this team is strong and that it represents every aspect of this community. Mr. Reland, does that help you?
Yeah, 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 it does. It does. Again, the the process is is really puts a lot of pressure on us as we're representing our residents and and seeing things we agree and disagree with each each of these candidates, you know, each of the five that were on the board for today. We don't know, we lost Mr. Eckert, we lost Mr. Ferry for not being able to attend, and Mr. Bono was unable to attend because of his mother. So that's an unfortunate thing. It wasn't by choice. I still think those three are are great. Like, I don't think we can go wrong with McCoy Brenner or Bono. But I'm really torn as in things that I disagree with some of them. And that's that's kind of where I am. I'm I'm a little undecided. So I don't know if if we'll have enough votes with with the people that are speaking today. If we'll have a majority for anybody.
Other discussion, or is there an interest in getting a motion on the table?
I make the motion. Pardon me, Mr. McMillan, or Councilman McMillan, did you do it?
Councilmember Millen?
I'll make a motion that we table it until our next council meeting in January for further discussion. As Councilman Reland has a few questions who would like to gather with the team.
Is there a second?
There are second.
Motion seconded by Gallagher. The motion on the table is to table this discussion until January to enable further discussion. Is there any discussion regarding the motion before we have the clerk call a roll? Mayor Protem Caulfield?
Yeah, I I'm not opposed to tabling. I'm just wondering if this body could maybe work to get something done tonight. A lot of committee appointments are being held up. I don't think people elected us to sit and keep kicking the damn can down the road. We got a lot of stuff to do. We've got committees to be appointed to and things to get done. I would just encourage, maybe, before we decide to just another four weeks is maybe, I don't know, maybe that's additional discussions or another motion. I'm not sure, but I'd submit my piece.
Other comments? Councilmember Viner?
I need to second what Mayor Protem Caulfield said. I don't see any reason why we can't move forward with this. And then then we got elected to get some work done and and on public services right now. The fact that we don't have the committees fully appointed is actually slowing down our ability to get things done. Again, we're all in agreement. We have excellent candidates. Then I think we can work this out, and I'm absolutely opposed to pushing, kicking this can, pass the holidays another four weeks. And I think we can get this worked out. We want to have additional discussion, but like I said, right now is the time to discuss. So if we want to work this out, let's work that out. And again, I I'm going to try to get this done now, but if we can't, we gotta get this sorted out in the next days, not weeks. That's just a disservice to the community.
Other discussion? I would agree, and we'll be voting accordingly as well. If there is no additional discussion, clerk, can you please call the roll? So and I should remind, I'm sorry, I should remind everybody what we're voting on. The motion is to table this discussion until the January meeting of City Council. With that, if you could please call the roll.
Mayor Hodges?
No.
Caulfield?
No.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
And Viner?
No.
Motion fails, I believe, City Attorney Hollitt, due to
That's correct. A tie vote is a no vote.
Okay, so with that, we move back to discussion. Let's move this forward. Councilmember Reland?
Yeah, it's just just because we have six people voting. Let's, we we know how everyone voted. I voted for Bono. If I change my vote to McQuish, then we're still in a stalemate. If I move my vote to Brenner, then we have a four to two majority. And that it seems like it's weighing on me, which that sucks for me, because again, we have great candidates here. It was unfortunate Jay wasn't able to make it to 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 share his thoughts on everything as well. I don't want to hold everything up. That's not my intention here at all. So.
Can I ask a question?
I think Councilmember McMillan had his hand up, and then, yes, of course, Councilmember Gallagher.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was going to throw out there and possibly to postpone this decision for one week from today and meet convene then for a special a special meeting one week from today. We don't go into January.
Okay, that's an option. Councilmember Gallagher?
I'm not opposed to that option either. Give some time to think. But perhaps Councilmember Rayland, you can share with us the reasons why you chose the way you chose. I don't remember hearing why you made your selection.
I made my selection because it was, sorry, may I talk, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I made my selection because I was torn. I I I I know Mr. Brenner as a friend. I know his family really well, and I love them all. I I was able to talk to Mr. McQuish today and his his capability in in taking over the finance and and getting that into shape was something that that brought my attention and his dedication to the city as well. And that's unfortunate. I was only able to talk to him for 20 minutes. I know Jay just from recent times as well, but he really impressed me with his outside the box thinking, managing communication, as well as finance and his philanthropy philanthropy efforts as well. I see him as across the line. Someone that's qualified as well. I see Mr. McQuish is qualified. I see Mr. Brenner is qualified. So again, I don't want mean to stop everything here. Is it? Obviously, we have a three to two plus me. So I'm torn. If I can say I'm not feeling well and back out, then you guys can have your vote and get your majority. But I'm willing to make a motion. Let's make a motion for to to move Brian Brenner into the appointed seat, vacating a council member fluids resignation.
Motion by Reland to nominate or appoint Brian Brenner to the vacant seat. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Viner. Is there discussion? Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
And Viner?
Councilmember Viner, I'm sorry, did he, did we get a response?
Yes.
Great, thank you. With that, the motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Now almost Councilmember Brian Brenner. And just as importantly, Mr. McCush, I do hope you know how appreciated your skill set was by everybody on this council. I I know that everybody I spoke with certainly feels that you have a tremendous skill set, and certainly your commitment to the community goes without question. So it was, for me at least, it had nothing to do with you as an individual and everything to do to do just with the timing and the strategy and the need to go forward. And with that, certainly, Mr. Brenner, you're an exceptional addition to the team. Councilmember Viner?
No, I just wanted to reiterate as well to Mr. McCush, there are a number of openings coming up on different commissions, and I think he would be a great asset. So really, we will be, we continue some of this because I think he's got something that would add to the group.
I would also like to thank this council for the unanimous vote. I do think that is a very important step forward to embrace our new colleague, and I know that this wasn't an easy decision for all of you. So thank you for that compromise and consensus and for being a team. In terms of next steps, City Manager Seisland, thank you also to you and Clerk Blayhut for running a very smooth process. I I don't know that we, well, I was going to suggest we swear Mr. Brenner in right now, but perhaps we should do that later to keep the meeting moving forward. But is that his next step?
Yes, Mayor Hodges, that would be his next step. You know, we would be calling Mr. Brenner in that we would, you know, bring him into City Hall for an official swearing in.
Could you please put him on camera for a moment so you can make sure he's still there and?
Yeah, Brian, if you want to go ahead and turn on your camera, you should be able to do so.
Greetings all. Thank you very much for the unanimous vote of confidence. I know it was a very difficult decision for, well, I mean, difficult decision for all, some more than others. It is greatly appreciated. It's an honor to serve with you all. I'm very excited. Again, I am, I think, very highly of this group. I think we have daunting work ahead of us, but there's also a good amount that is very exciting. So I am very motivated to hit the ground running, and I look forward to joining you all. So I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Elect. Please let us know when your swearing in is scheduled for, so we can come and support you. And thanks again to the team. So moving forward, let's make a goal here, council members, to get this meeting completed well before 11:00 PM, hopefully. And so let's move on to the next item, which is committee board appointments and reappointments. There are several boards and commissions requiring appointments, and in some cases, reappointments this evening. We can move through them one at a time. First up, there's the Board of Review. I present to you first for your consideration, Marissa Cavalier for a three-year term. Is there a motion?
I motion.
Mayor Protem Caulfield, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Viner, the motion on the table is to approve Marissa Cavalier for a Board of Review term ending in three years. Is there any discussion? Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Viner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Cavalier on her appointment. Next up is Mr. Andrew Har also for a Board of Review appointment, three-year term ending on December 31 of that year. Is there a motion in support of his candidacy?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilmember McMillan, seconded by Councilmember Reland. Is there any discussion? Clerk Blayhut, could you, could you please call the roll regarding the motion to appoint Mr. Har to his three-year term on the Board of Review?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
And Viner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Har has been appointed to the Board of Review. Next up are several reappointments to the Recreation Commission, all three-year terms ending on December 31. First up is Mr. James Cunick. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gallagher, seconded by Reland, to appoint Mr. Cunick to the three-year term. Any discussion? Clerk Blayhut, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
And Viner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Cunick has been returned to his seat for a three-year term. Next up is Mr. Larry Haggard, also a reappointment for the Recreation Commission for a three-year term. Is there a motion?
I motion.
Moved by Mayor Protem Caulfield, seconded by Councilmember Reland. Any discussion? Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
And Viner?
Motion carries. Mr. Haggard has been reappointed. Last on the list for Recreation Commission appointment, three-year term once again, is the reappointment of Michael Hindelang. Is there a motion? Moved by Councilmember McMillan, seconded by Viner.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
And Viner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Hindelang has been reappointed. The final set of appointments for your consideration today fall under the Tax Increment Financing Authority Board for a four-year term for both candidates that will end on December 31 of that year. The first up is Mr. Joe Tompkins. Is there a motion?
I motion.
By Mayor, moved by Mayor Protem Caulfield. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gallagher to appoint Mr. Joe Tompkins or reappoint to a four-year term on the Tifa. Any discussion? Councilmember Reland?
I'm just wondering how, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was wondering how long Mr. Tompkins has been on the Tifa.
City Manager Seisland, I'll look to you for assistance.
I believe he's been on the board now for three or four years.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
And Viner?
Yes.
Motion carries, and Mr. Tompkins has been reappointed to the Tax Increment Financing Authority Board. Next up for your consideration is a new appointment to the Tax Increment Financing, excuse me, Tax Increment Finance Authority Board, also for a four-year term. Up for your consideration is Mr. Trenton Chamberlain. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Moved by Councilmember Gallagher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Caulfield. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reland?
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. I'm wondering if if we can, because Mr. Chamberlain is also a business owner, I'm I'm looking to get more residents. I'd love to get more residents on the Tifa board. Mr. Chamberlain won't be getting my support for that reason. I think we have Mr. Chamberlain won't be getting my support for that reason. I think we have too many businesses there. We're noticing that that some of the decisions are starting to neglect what residents really need. That that's my discussion there.
I'm just to make sure you understand Mr. Chamberlain's credentials. I will, and actually, Tifa requirements upfront, there are a certain number of residents that are required to be appointed. We have met that expectation. Secondly, Mr. Chamberlain does live in the Tax Increment Financing Authority. He's a resident of Beacons Field.
No, he's south of Jefferson.
Mr. Sizlin, can you verify?
Can you verify that, Nick?
Yeah, he lives at 900 block of Beacons Field.
Uh, let me, let me check.
But I do believe City Attorney Howlett that even without that, we have met the requirement for resident representation on the Tifa.
That doesn't mean we can go above that, though. That's just minimum.
Correct.
But I guess what's important, though, to, and sorry for interjecting, we have, I want to make sure we're meeting that.
I believe that's true. We can double check that. But yeah, I believe that's the case.
My research showed that we have met that expectation.
That's my understanding.
No, I'm not questioning whether we met it. I'd like to go above and beyond having a minimum resident involvement on the Tifa.
Is there other discussion? Mayor Protem Caulfield?
I was gonna say, I, you know, I I don't disagree. I just want to make sure that this appointment does not negate that.
Councilmember Vener?
So I want to focus on the merits of the individual applying as opposed to, you know, this meeting quota. Mr. Chamberlain is involved in the Business Association. He's been extremely active with most of the amazing activities that are going on in Kershawville, especially right now, coming back from COVID. I mean, I think he's a fantastic appointment. He's incredibly engaged, not only as a, you know, business owner, but just in the broader community. So then I'm wholeheartedly in support of him.
Other discussion? Mayor Protem Caulfield?
Oh, I couldn't agree anymore. I mean, I think, you know, being not only a resident, maybe not directly in that area, but a business owner and his affiliation with what he's going on, I wholeheartedly agree with this, with Councilmember Vener.
I would like to add that there is a remaining vacancy. Mr. Jimmy Depew has refrained from putting his hat in the ring for reappointment. So there will be another vacancy in January, and if there are residents that are interested, I'd certainly like to consider those individuals for that position. If that helps at all, Mr. Relin, meet your, your, your hopes. Other discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mayor Hodges, I'm unable to get to Building Department because I'd have to log out and remote back in. However, I do want to point out in the Tifa bylaws that that were adopted by the Tax Increment Finance Authority, at least a majority of the members shall be persons who have an interest in property located in the Tifa district. At least one of the members shall be a resident of the Tifa if the district has 100 or more persons residing with it.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, I would call the question.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Raylan?
No.
And Councilmember Vener?
Yes. Yes.
Motion. Thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Trenton Chamberlain has been appointed to a four-year term on the Tax Increment Financing Authority Board. As I mentioned, there will be another vacancy under consideration for the January meeting, and I would hope that individuals that have an interest would submit their names for consideration. There also will be an opening on the Recreation Commission, given Councilmembers, Councilmember McMillan's advancement to the City Council, thereby creating that vacancy. The Downtown Development Authority also has two vacancies. This gives me an opportunity to announce that Chairperson Dr. Philip Hesberg has decided to step down after many, many years of tremendous leadership on that board. We will honor him more fully at the January meeting of Council, but certainly wanted to make sure you were all aware of that and the, and the vacancy that results as a part of that. And also sadly, Vice Chairperson Lena Carlisle passed away unexpectedly last week. I I will have more to say about her later in the meeting and her service to the community, but that also creates a second vacancy on the Downtown Development Authority that I would encourage residents to consider putting their name in the ring for that. And lastly, the Board of Review, I, we will, we do have one additional vacancy, and I believe we will also be appointing an alternate. That's a difficult skillset to fill. So if you know somebody who can accomplish that for us, that would be great to know as well. With that, we will move on in the agenda to item number seven under New Business, which is City Council January meeting date. City Manager, did you want to leave this part of the discussion?
Yeah, sure. And I want to thank Clerk Blayhut for preparing the memo here. So in the City Council asked Administration to review the meeting dates for the Gross Point Public School System for the purpose of trying to accommodate those that are interested in attending City Council and School Board and not be on the same night. At this time, the Gross Point Public School System has not established its 2022 calendar yet year. So Administration, we're looking that we would have the January 10th City Council meeting, which is the second Monday of January, to looking at completing the 2022 calendar for City Council consideration and adoption at this time. And so what I'm looking for are recommendation is approving the meeting date of January 10th at 7:00 PM, and certainly, we would entertain a motion for that recommended meeting.
Thank you, City Manager Sizlin. Is there a motion to approve January 10th as our first meeting of the 2022 calendar year, knowing that at that time we would also approve meetings for the balance of the year, knowing then what the School Board calendar provides for, so we do not conflict? Is Councilmember Relin? Is there a second? Councilmember McMillan, any discussion?
I want to say thanks. Sorry. I would, I'd like to just say thanks for taking that into consideration. A lot of residents are are worried about Trombley, which is the number one thing that I know all the parkers worried about, and some other items I don't want to discuss. Thank you.
Exactly. I'm, I hope the whole community notices because you're absolutely right. This is important. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Raylan?
Yes.
And Vener?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will meet on January 10th in 2022 and also commit to the balance of the year's meetings at that time as well. Next item on the agenda is the DPW Storm Sewer Project. City Manager Sizlin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Hodges, and members of council and the public. So I previously brought this item to the Tax Increment Finance Authority Board, and so I'm going to read you a brief summary regarding this. The original stormwater design for the DPW yard called for a chamber detention system. Effort, after further discussion, a revised design eliminated that chamber detention system, replaced it with 500 linear feet of a corrugated drainage pipe. Both of these systems were to tie into the existing combined sewer line running down the alley at the time, and that's 1,400 block of Wayburn in Maryland. However, due to recent storm events in the region and the city, we looked at this, the architect, general contractor, working with Wayne County Public Service Office, have revised our original design for the benefit of reducing flow and separating the alley, as well as meeting in exceeding our stormwater requirements from Wayne County. The revised county approval drawings with the final piping design included additional required items, including more manhole structures for 60,000, something Mr. Patrick Drowes discussed, we need more of in our community. And the pricing for the separate dedicated storm sewer line down the alley is looking at about 97,000. These are stormwater management upgrades for the overall system that slows down the release of stormwater into the system and separates the alley and the 1,400 block of Maryland and Wayburn to Gothy. I do want to make this very clear that this is something that originally, you know, we were looking at as part of the design. We were going to go into the combined system. However, you know, factors like these storm events have really changed how we're looking at drying out our community and moving forward, and that I I feel very strongly that this is something that only, not only benefits our Public Works building that is being built, but also those residents over on the 1,400 blocks. And this is something that myself, DPW, and our engineers are looking at moving forward, that we can further separate these alleys for the benefit of the residents. And so I do want to thank the Tifa for paying for half of this expenditure, and I would ask for the City Council to consider the other half, which is about 78,750 dollars, $51 within the Water Sewer Fund. And, you know, with your thoughts, I would really like to consider if you would approve this expenditure.
Thank you, City Manager Sizlin. Is there anybody who would like to get a motion on the table so we can advance some discussion? Was that you, Mr. Vener?
Motion, yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Vener. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember McMillan to approve a $78,000 expenditure deriving from the Water Sewer Fund. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Relin?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Nick, I was wondering, you mentioned the alleys, how many alleys are not separated that we know of?
I couldn't tell you the exact number of alleys, but a majority of our alleys are not separated. They are combined.
Were those supposed to be separated with our previous project?
When you say previous project, are you discussing the storm?
Yeah, the storm sewer separation.
Uh, I was not there at this time. This was, you know, something that was many years ago before you and I were here in the city. And so, you know, those discussions were had at that time as long in, you know, working with the community. I do want to be clear that about 90% of our total system is separated. There is about 10% of our system, which is still combined, which includes the alleys. And I've, I've said in public as well, there's a small area in front of Jefferson and over in the north by Bishop. And so this is something that, you know, we know where we're at now, and considering the storm events, you know, we obviously, we got to change the game. And this is something that I'm looking at as that small step that we can go ahead and drought the system, help our residents, and also make this DPW facility something that they're not going to flood their own new facility moving forward. So.
Yeah, don't, don't take my question as blaming you for that. I wasn't at all. I just wasn't sure if we knew if the alleys were not, and it's basically to prep the residents for that fact, too, that we're going to have to pay for, pay for it somehow.
And the great thing I do want to add, Councilmember Relin, sorry, is that
Go ahead.
while we're also doing the CCTV program, it is crucial that while we're going through this process, you know, we are identifying every single pipe within Gross Point Park. As you know, we've, I've talked about a lot. It's 41 miles of it. You know, and so we're even going into the alleys, we're going to the streets, and this is something that, you know, we're going to learn more of our system, you know, you know, and and modernize through a GIS, and it's something that I'm very passionate about. You know, upgrading our technology and our knowledge of our infrastructure within our community. And so, you know, to me again, I just, I just have to say I'm, I'm very passionate about this.
No, that's great. We, we all appreciate that. Getting that in order is is really a top priority. My next question is, you mentioned that this is change order number seven or number eight. Do we know what the first change, first six change orders were, and was there any money spent on those as well? And then the, the question after that is, I'm sure we have contingency money built into that, that guaranteed $4 million of construction, which this is, I'm assuming, pushing over. But I'm wondering where else have we spent money already that we don't know about?
So the $4 million is still guaranteed for the building proper, for the project. So that is still set in stone. That was part of the contract we signed with Ron Selly, who is the general contractor for this. This was an added expenditure that, again, it changed with the storm events. You know, this is something that was outside of that 4 million. And so, you know, we had to look at this as an opportunity for improving the system. And I, you, your other question, I apologize.
It always had to do with contingency money with our construction. You know, obviously, we, a good project would, I'm, I'm saying just from my own minimal experience, a good project would have about 10% contingency on one.
There is a, sorry, yeah, there is a contingency within there, obviously, too, with, you know, the good thing is, is, you know, several months ago, Ron Selly and Stucky Vitale actually started purchasing supplies for the building itself, rather than if they had purchased it now, we probably would, you know, due to inflation that's going on in our country right now, we would have probably had some more challenges potentially, and we'd have to have that further discussion. But yes, we do have a contingency within that $4 million. And then change, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, I have some other questions, but I'll, I'll send them to you via email, and then maybe you can update the residents afterward. I just know some, some residents emailed me saying, hey, I thought we were guaranteed 4 million, but this is outside of that. I think that needs to be explained. What are we paying above and beyond construction costs, just so we know? And we can keep that on budget as well. We don't want to have a blank checkbook for everything that changes, and I appreciate you staying on top of that. So thank you.
But I think, to be clear, this is not a project cost related to the building. It's, it's separate from that, correct?
Yeah, it is. It is.
Yeah. So just so that's clear to the community, and there's good information out there, and we do have the guarantee not to exceed 4 million on the cost of the actual building itself. So we're in good stead on both fronts. Is that a fair statement, City Manager Sizlin?
This is, and this is something that City Attorney Howlett looked at extensively through his other work, working with other clients. This is something that he, he does review, and so he did a great job of working with us, you know, adding in some other language that would benefit the Tifa, you know, with this project. And so I do thank City Attorney Howlett for that work, too.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk, could you please call the roll regarding the motion on the table to expend $78,751 from the Water Sewer Fund to install this newly revised system?
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Raylan?
Yes.
And Vener?
Yes.
Motion carries. City Manager Sizlin, you are authorized to proceed in this regard. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is council comment. Whom amongst my colleagues would like to be heard? Councilmember Relin?
I have something very quick. Congratulations to Councilmember McMillan, and congratulations to the council member to be Mr. Brenner. Glad we got through that in the manner which we did. It did show that we are a team looking, looking to move forward. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Relin. Certainly agree.
Mayor Hodges, may I say something?
Of course.
Mayor Hodges, may I say something? Yes, I would like to clarify my retirement plan, and then to say I am not planning on retiring anytime soon. I assure you all that I will provide a little note on leaving. So I don't know, you know, if we had a conversation five years ago, I don't even remember that, but I just wanted to.
Is it because we're so cute? Clerk Blayhut, is it because we're so cute, you can't resist us? Yay. Thank you for that good news. I would like to, as I said, take a moment to tribute Lena Carlisle, who has served our community so well. And I thought nobody can say it better than her beautiful family who wrote her obit, and it's so beautifully crafted that I thought I would just read it to you all quickly. A lean, AKA Lena, Leepen Lena, or Nene, Turpin Carlisle, 78, of Gross Point Park, formerly of Newton, Virginia, passed away peacefully on Monday, December 6th, 2021. Though the cause is unknown, it was likely due to too much dancing, smiling, singing, and carrying on. Leepen Lena entered this world by storm on June 27th, 1943, in Richmond, Virginia, to the late William G. Turpin and the late Lucille Andrews Turpin. The world hasn't been the same since. Many years after graduating from Marriott High School in Virginia, Lena raised two fine young men with her former husband, Robert Carlisle. A few years later, she went on to earn her Master of Education degree from the University of Toledo. At the age of 60, she reinvented herself and earned a Master of Science in Finance from Walsh College in Troy, Michigan. She was the consummate student and conveyed the importance of which to her children and grandchildren. She took great pride in knowing that she successfully met her goal in preparing for all her grandchildren's higher education requirements. Nene had such a creative mind, dabbling in landscape design, interior design, architectural design, woodworking, and even jewelry design. She had this enormous tank full of relentless drive and creativity that just constantly overflowed. She began her professional career as an art teacher in Toledo, Ohio, at the junior high level. A few years later, she became the curator at the Toledo Museum of Art, and later, a curator for the Detroit Institute of Arts. A person of many talents, Lena was also a financial planner for AXA Advisors and Securian Financial during her later years. There's no doubt she loved a good challenge, yet she possessed a softness and grace that drew in others. Lena was a member of the Gross Point Memorial Church Rotary Club and the Walloon Lake Country Club, just to name a few. She loved to give back to the community, and that she did, touching so many lives. She loved to give back to the community, and that she did, touching so many lives along the way. She also enjoyed gardening, dancing, entertaining her friends with a luncheon on her patio, and of course, a good nap. She did everything 100%, including napping. Nene loved to travel and experienced new things, too. She lived in several different places, including six different states and Seoul, Korea. She visited most of the United States and even Spain, Italy, Russia, Germany, England, Mexico, and Canada. Leepin Lena is survived by her two sons, Hunter, wife Tara, Foster, wife Jennifer, and five grandchildren, Tucker, Carter, Macy, Everett, and William. The memorial gathering is from 4:00 to 6:00 PM tomorrow evening at Verheiden Funeral Home on Mac Avenue. If you can't join her there, you can certainly make a contribution in her honor to the Walleye, Walloon Lake Association. And I'd also like to point out that she did serve as the Vice Chair of the Downtown Development Authority and as the seated Chair of the Gross Point Park Foundation, among other service opportunities within Gross Point Park. So a loss to many, and I hope she knows how much her community adored her, and I hope that all of you will have an opportunity to honor her in some way, perhaps tomorrow evening. And Mr. Seisland, we should talk about whether or not there's some other memorial that should be done on her behalf. Are there any other comments before we move to public comment? Thank you, Mr. Seisland. Could you please lead us through the public comment portion of the meeting?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mayor Hodges. I have no written public comment for non-agenda items, and I will now ask the public if there's any spoken public comment. Mayor Hodges, seeing no hands raised, there's no public comment.
With that, then, there would be a motion, well, I should say, Happy Holidays, Tom. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Rellin, a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Vener to adjourn the meeting at 10:41 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, opposed? Our meeting is adjourned at 10:41 PM. Thank you all. We accomplished a lot tonight.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.